Okay. Call the meeting to order, if you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we start this meeting, please give us guidance. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to fully understand these people before us. Help us to value and appreciate their views. May your Spirit guide us in the decisions we make, and may your grace abound in us. Amen. Okay. Before we begin, there are a couple changes. First, item three E, moving the start time. We're gonna take that into the action item. Make that action item seven F. Action item seven C. Mr. White has asked that we move that to discussion, so that will become nine D.
Seven C. Seven C becomes nine D.
And... Do we want to listen to another thing, Brian? For the letter.
Oh, concerning the...
Tax.
The tax. We can...
Move that to a discussion item?
Discussion item, yeah.
Okay.
Just concerning disabled tax...
So that's nine E?
That would become, yeah, nine E. Okay. Do we have any other changes?
I just have one that I'd like to move to an action item or add to the action item. It's a B-DOT request for a citizen.
Okay. Request, that'll become seven G.
What was that? I didn't hear you.
He had a request from a constituent of something from B-DOT.
Oh, okay.
That'd be seven G.
Seven G.
Okay. Are there any other changes or modifications? If not, I look for a motion to approve as amended.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. On the modified consent agenda, can I get a motion on that?
Still moved?
Second then.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries four zero. Move to the public appearances. First is the Tourism Quarterly Report. Lee.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are y'all doing? Y'all have received our second quarter Tourism Quarterly Report. Just a few things to glance over in that quarterly report. As you can see, and as I've mentioned to you on numerous occasions up here in front of you, as you can see, visitation at our visitor center is down. It is a trend locally, nationally, statewide, everywhere. So what we're trying to do is become more mobile-based. And so as you can see from our website, visitation numbers, we have increased our website visitation tremendously over the past two years, actually to the tune of twenty-six percent since 2013, and a hundred and five percent since 2012. So that, along with our Facebook post, we are actually starting to advertise on Facebook some. And our most recent advertisement that we did on Facebook was for the Gordonsville Fried Chicken Festival. We had a budget of fifty dollars for that advertisement, and it reached sixteen thousand people. So, small budget, lot of reach. So, we're putting more and more of our resources into Facebook advertising so that we can reach more people that way.
You mentioned mobile. I was wondering, do we need to look at our website as from a mobile-friendly point of view? Or are we there, you think?
Yes, sir. That's something that I'm looking into right now. I'm looking for grant opportunities to make our website more mobile-based. Because right now, when you pull up our website on a mobile phone, it is very hard to see. It looks just like it does on a regular computer. So I've already reached out to the designer of our original website to get quotes for the mobile website and see if we can obtain some grant funding for that. One of the other big things that we're working on right now is our VTC grant that we received last year. As you remember, we received twenty-five thousand dollars from the Virginia Tourism Corporation for a joint advertising campaign with Orange and Madison Counties. That has been launched. We have had advertisements on Travel Channel dot com, HGTV dot com, and the Food Network dot com, as well as we're running advertisements right now in the Richmond area on CBS Six and in the Hampton Roads area on WTKR, which is a sister station to CBS Six. That gives us coverage area from a little bit north of us all the way to northeastern North Carolina. So we're running event-based advertising, based on some of the larger events that Madison and Orange have, as well as generic advertising, trying to attract visitors to this area. We also have signed on with Cox Media, who has started a Virginia Wine Channel that is gonna be on Cox On Demand in all the major markets in the state of Virginia to advertise the wineries in Orange and Madison Counties. Recently, we did two large events with our partner departments here in the county. We did the Business Expo with the Department of Economic Development at the Hornet Center on the nineteenth of June. And that definitely was a success over last year. Still trying to tweak it a little bit and get it to where the public engages more in it. And we've had discussions with the Chamber of Commerce in moving to that, our Business Expo event, and partnering it with their Business Appreciation event that they do. Because they're only a month apart right now. We're tapping into the same group of individuals, asking them for sponsorships and participation and everything. And we think if we combine resources with the Chamber of Commerce, we'll do a better service to the business community. So going forward for next year, that's what we're gonna do. That's the approach that we're going to take. Also, we did the Plane in the Park event with the Parks and Rec Foundation, Department of Parks and Recreation, Office on Youth Tourism, and Orange Youth Sports Foundation. And we estimate that we had about five thousand people out there. So knowing that next year, the Fourth is actually on the Saturday, we've already begun booking all of our fireworks and sound company and the children's events and stuff like that, knowing that we're gonna have to get on the ball earlier this time because of the, because of being on the Fourth. As far as the Sesskew Centennial Committee goes, we held an event on May second at Mayhurst with Jack North to commemorate the christening of A.P. Hill's daughter. We had about forty individuals out there, and it was a fundraising event. Jack asked that we charge a minimal fee and have that go to the Love Outreach Food Pantry, and we raised two hundred and fifty dollars for the Love Outreach Food Pantry. So going forward, we're just gonna be working on continuing our VTC marketing grant, as well as the grant that we received with the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission for the Agri Artisan Trail and everything that goes along with that. We're also going to be partnering with the counties from Loudoun County all the way to Nelson County to brand the entire region along the Route Fifteen corridor as Virginia's Piedmont, America's Wine Country. The owner of Barrel Oak Winery in Falkir County has, is on the Virginia Wine Marketing Board, as well as was on the VTC Board, and came up with the idea of needing to brand this region and kinda make it like a Napa Valley of the East Coast. So, all the counties along that stretch have come together, and we meet every couple of months, trying to get this initiative going, to brand this region. And especially it's helpful because of the Dulles entryway, straight from Dulles, straight through Loudoun County, all the way down through here. So, look for more information to come on that. And next time that I'm here before you give my quarterly report, I will have the Virginia Tourism Corporation numbers for 2013. And we, months to come, hopefully, I will have a more granular, more pared-down look at Orange County through the Virginia, through the Tourism Advisory Committee, because we're looking to do an economic impact study through the Tourism Advisory Committee right now. So, I'll have those numbers for you as well. Any questions?
Nope. Sounds like you're doing well.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lee. Okay. Next would be the B-DOT update. Mark Nippon. Greetings, sir.
Good afternoon. Glad to be here. I think you have a copy of our July report. And first part of it are projects in development. And I don't think, as far as any movement in projects, the schedule I think is the same from the previous report. Laure Road, which is a secondary six-year plan project, would be the next one in line for an advertisement next November to fifteen, 2015. And it's still on schedule. It's some interstate, or some roadway realignment. We have several projects that are actually under construction at this time in the districts. Some of them are district-wide. Guardrail repair projects. Resurfacing project. We have a pipe rehabilitation project. And surface treatment projects. Several projects that are in, that will affect roads in Orange County. I think I previously provided a actual list of roads that to be resurfaced previously to the board, but I have a, I can provide another copy here if I need to with Mr. David, if there are any questions about which roads we're gonna be doing. There are a number of traffic engineering studies that have been completed, and also some that are pending. We, Route Six Twenty-One was a, was actually a study that was completed at the request of the Fredericksburg Traffic Engineer, because they were doing some work on their side of the county line. And he suggested that, that we review our side of the county line on Six Twenty-One and do some pavement marking, review the pavement markings in that area. What we ended up finding out was there's some, we've got some pavement edge problems, and so we've gotta do some maintenance to the pavement edges so we can put some striping, redo some striping on Six Twenty-One. And also, let's see, trying to find the report here. Yeah, basically do some edge striping. So, we're gonna do some pavement repairs on the edge, on the edges of Six Twenty-One near the Spotsylvania County line to assist in that area. There was a fatality, I think, on the Fredericksburg County, on the, excuse me, Spotsylvania County side. Also, we did, the study was done on Route Six Fourteen as a result of a fatality. And we're gonna do some signing improvements there, some curb. We're gonna put some Chevron signs and some curb signs on Route Six Fourteen to help, help that area. There are several speed studies underway. Six Eleven, Zor Road, also Goldell Road. And, let's see, two sections of Six Eleven. And then Goldell, Six Oh Four. I think it's Six Oh Four and Six Eleven, Goldell. So those are still pending, but I look, look for those to be completed, hopefully within the next thirty days. I think most of the data's been collected, and we should have final results on those within the next thirty days. And then also, there are some maintenance activities that we were, occurred in June. And I will, you know, provide some updated maintenance activities with each monthly report. So, that's basically the run-through of the monthly report. One, a new thing that has come up is, is there was legislation this year to, on unpaved roads, to establish a statutory speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour on all unpaved roads. So what that means is now, instead of fifty-five is the statutory speed limit, it's thirty-five miles an hour. We're not gonna go out and put up thirty-five mile an hour signs. What we'll do is if we get a request, we will, we will review a road at request and determine if thirty-five is appropriate or not. And, you know, upon the study, we can, we can post it higher or lower. But statutory, unposted, it'll be thirty-five miles an hour, effective July one.
Is there gonna be a public information campaign to let people know that? Because if you're not gonna post it, and it's already started...
There was, there was news releases worse than out.
I saw a couple of them.
Yeah.
But I get them automatically.
And we will be working with DMV to try to educate the public.
And the state police and the local sheriff's office? I mean, we have, what? Sixty miles of unpaved road in the county?
They're well aware of it.
Okay.
Realistically, fifty-five on some of those roads? I don't wanna meet them.
Yeah, you can't do it anyway.
It's just a bad, bad decision.
I'm okay with the decision of it. What I'm concerned about is letting people be aware of it so that they're not innocently surprised.
Well, there's...
There's a difference between...
Usually when laws change, there is a period of educational forgiveness.
Let's hope so. We'll let you know.
Okay, yeah.
Because I guarantee you we're gonna...
Let me know if you run into...
Mark, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Flat Run Road between Twenty and Threes in pretty good shape, except for about a mile or so from Route Three. There's a lot of, filled with potholes, and it needs some work. I don't know what your standard is for at what point you start grinding that up and repaving it.
That is in our 2015 program for next year. We're gonna resurface mill, full-depth patch and resurface that whole section.
Okay, good. It's in 2015?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You asked the right question. There you go back. Look what I got, so.
I have one, Mark, but I'll cover under other items. But it does relate to Route Six Twenty-One and the speed study. How far is the speed study that you're doing on Six Twenty-One?
Actually, the study, it was actually not a speed study. It was a, wait a minute. It was a review of the curves. And it didn't result in a lowering of the speed. It basically was, we were, the review was to look at installing edge lines on the road. And what they found out is we've got some maintenance issues on our edges where we can't put a line because there's crumbling asphalt. So we gotta go and try to fix it.
How far up Six Twenty-One did that address?
It was a four-mile section of, that was located in Spotsylvania County. Actually, they looked at the whole twelve and a twelve-point-six mile segment of Six Twenty-One.
Okay, good. Because there's, there's a desire to change some of the passing areas to no passing, some other things. But we'll get that forwarded to you.
Okay, okay, yes. I don't know that they looked at the centerline markings were part of it, but I know the edge lines were a part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Fiscal Year Program Plan Presentation. Brian.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's good to have a few minutes on your agenda. And let you know what we're doing in the coming year with your county services. With me here, I want to introduce a few folks. You, before I get into that introduction, I want to say you got a vacancy on our board. Philip Cook left his position on the board after, actually, good service. He served the county well. But that created a vacancy that I've notified y'all of, so we'll be looking for an appointment from Orange County sometime in the coming months. Hopefully, someone will step forward and be willing to fulfill that role. But joining me here this evening, we have, actually, I have three of my board members here. I've got Marcy Brooks and Mary Lou O'Farland. We also have Elizabeth Bennett, who's a Culpeper representative, just seeing how things are done in other localities. Since I'm in Orange, I can see how they really do it right in Orange County. But Elizabeth will probably come to the Culpeper meeting as well and may dispute that comment that I made there. So I suppose I should be careful about that.
But you're being quite politically correct while you're here.
That's right. You've gotta, you gotta talk to the audience in front of you at the time, so... But I do wanna run through the highlights of our program plan and the challenges for the next year. I'll do this pretty quickly. And then I'll also be glad to answer any questions that you have. Each year, our board goes through, similar to what you're doing when you develop a county budget, we start very early on in early winter, starting to look at priorities, challenges, funding situations, and mapping out our plan for the next year fiscally, and then looking a little beyond that programmatically. So this program plan is an effort to do just that. Let me get the clicker working here right. We faced a number of big challenges this year as an organization. And I'll move through these quickly, because some of these I need for you to know, but you don't need to know the details. That's why you appoint people to our board. We have made a full transition to electronic health records. Most, if you go into your physicians and hospitals now, you see these things in operation. It's a pretty commonplace practice now. This was a huge transition for us and costly, as a matter of fact. One that we had to do and required. So it became part of the fiscal mix of the challenges that we faced. And we're fully in electronic health records now in our, all of our services, as a matter of fact. You have probably been aware of the statutory changes that occurred around emergency mental health evaluations. This got a lot of activity, a lot of press in the General Assembly. Matter of fact, the newspaper has it yesterday and today about Virginians' transition to more rigid statutory climate around individuals on emergency custody orders and temporary detention orders. Has a lot of local impact, a lot of local impact on us and your law enforcement officials that we're working collaboratively with now. But this was a big deal for us to respond to these changes. When you look at our core revenue streams, which we will do momentarily in this presentation, you'll see that our revenue growth was nominal to flat. Not a good forecast for something where you're trying to grow services, but it is what it is. And our board had to face that in making decisions this year. We did manage to expand some services for adults with intellectual disabilities. We have two new group homes opening up soon, as a matter of fact, in the coming weeks. That is part of Virginians', Virginia's increased focus on services for adults with intellectual disabilities in community settings versus facility settings. We've been part of that movement for many years. This is just part of that continuing. We continue to see challenges in non-emergency mental health services. A slide later on gives you a snapshot about access times to our region. In Orange, actually, we don't do too bad in terms of access times for most adults who aren't experiencing an emergency. But you'll see that varies in our locality, and it continues to be a concern of ours that's difficult to address. We're doing some things in children's services that I won't spend a lot of time in the presentation tonight about. But what we're focusing on is what are we situated to do? And what is a private marketplace situated to do? No desire to compete with good private providers of services. So we are identifying our role in an array of services so that we're a referral source to the private providers in the community for children's services. We are and have a large volunteer program. Matter of fact, your two board appointees here are participants in our volunteer program, have been for years, working with seniors and adults with disabilities. We are anticipating the loss of federal support for that program. And even with that, are planning to maintain a core volunteer program to support volunteers in our services. We are letting go of something that is often referred to as the retired and senior volunteer programs, a little piece of federal money that we expect to lose. It's about sixty thousand dollars in our overall budget. And this budget that we did in Fiscal Fifteen anticipates that money going away. But we've cobbled together other resources to help sustain critical aspects of what we do in senior services in particular. And we, as a board, have maintained priority of keeping our senior centers open four days a week. Orange here, you have a very active and vibrant senior center that's open four days a week. Sometimes, in fiscal constraints, we would look at, is it, do we need to close that down another day of the week? Our board established priority that this is something is of value to all the localities we serve, and we need to maintain it. And we did. The funding challenges continue. The way we got through the gate to July first is we took a hard look at management and some of the services we provide, and we did some eliminating. We consolidated some services, we eliminated some positions, and we referred some services out to the private provider network where that was possible.
Can you refer out to the private? How's that funded?
This is primarily Medicaid-funded services, where we had a Medicaid funding source that was supporting it, and private providers bill and provide their service with Medicaid funding. So these were individuals with a funding source that we did. Yeah, good question. The other thing that we see a need for, and by the end of Fiscal Fifteen, we hope to be able to revisit, a goal of taking a more serious look at development and bringing in some part-time technical expertise to focus more on development activities, particularly in senior services and in prevention services. We get a lot of community attention to these programs. When we have done campaigns to raise money in these areas, we've been successful. We just don't have much time to do it. But we believe that it would, it represents a place where we could develop resources to develop local programs in the future. And as a board and as an organization, although we went through some cutbacks, we wanted to say, what we do, we will do well. We do not always meet all local needs. But the needs that we meet, we wanna commit to doing them very well. And these were some of the decision process going through our board activity this year. Brief update on some capital plans.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
You talk about the significant needs of those who are uninsured or without Medicaid. Do you provide assistance for people that, to help them get qualified for Medicaid, those that are? Do you, are you involved in that process at all?
We are, very much so. If an individual approaches for services or presents for services with us and does not have Medicaid, and we feel that they are eligible, we will assist them through an eligibility determination, which is made through the local social services agencies. Yes, sir. We will do that actively, as a matter of fact.
I ask because it's a complicated process that not, that most individuals couldn't tackle.
That's right. Most people don't wanna navigate that on their own. It can be complex. Any other questions before I go on? During last year's presentation, we talked in more detail about some capital projects that we have planned. Matter of fact, Mr. Fram and I went around, we visited some programs. These two projects are still moving forward. They're not planned for anything of brick-and-mortar activity until even another year or two. But they are funded, and we're still in the development stage. Both are about ready to, they're moving through approvals and getting towards a bidding activity. And both of those, one of them is a reuse of an old property that we own, and the other is a new construction activity in Culpeper that we would be developing. Give you a few, I'll run quickly through. This gives you the opportunity to see how the service levels affect all of our localities. And so if you're curious, I'll leave it to your time and pleasure to look at the other localities. We'll look specifically at Orange. As you can see, as your population demographics would suggest, you're third. This is, you are the third largest locality that we serve. And we, a little over fifteen hundred people will come through our door each year to receive services. This slide gives you a little snapshot of the services that they're getting. And it shows beyond a shadow of a doubt, most of those individuals are presenting for services through seeking mental health services or services for the intellectually disabled and substance use disorders. And then several hundred people in senior services come through, either participating in our senior center, getting meals on wheels that we provide, or other services that we provide to senior citizens in Orange County. We have a lot of services located in Orange, both here in the town. We have several group homes in Orange, one in Lake of the Woods, one here in the town. And we have an apartment project, a small apartment unit that's also here in the town of Orange that we supervise with staff. So there's a lot of visible activities in the locality for things that we do.
Is that why I noticed in terms of a percentage of the population, Orange County seems to be the highest?
Yeah, it is interesting. And I think I've been asked this question a lot of times, and that has impact on it in terms of, you know, location makes a difference in terms of services. Some of it has to do with just some of the demographics of the population and access to other services. And the thing that you'll find varies in our region. You go into Falkir County, for example, and you'll see that percentage very differently, as you've probably observed. But there are more options for individuals, for choices of service providers than there are here. So oftentimes, we become a preferred provider because of our location.
Because they are the lowest in terms of percentage.
Yeah, yeah. On Slide Twelve, this, although this, this slide is related to a project we're doing in Falkir and Rappahannock, I want to just quickly tell you what it is. Those two localities provided some extra money for us to hire a mental health therapist specifically aimed at seeing their citizens more rapidly at our clinic in Warrington. And they were concerned that their wait times in the Warrington clinic for their citizens was just too long. And they provided the extra funding, and we said, we'll use that individual to move up, new referrals into the system. And they provided the extra funding, and we said, we'll use that individual to move up into new referrals into the system and see what difference we can make. This is the kind of a point-in-time progress report to that. And you can see, people make a big difference. So the numbers speak for themselves in terms of both Falkir and Rappahannock, in terms of changing the equation from how long people are waiting to get that first appointment to come in. So we've, we've really kind of flipped the chart in terms of access to services, and I'll talk more specifically to them. It's an example of where if localities have a particular priority, there are ways we can work with them to help make something for their local citizens more accessible. And as a matter of fact, I think it's.
Do you think the, in case of Falkir, do you think the reducing the intake time led to the increase in the number of people signing up?
There is a relationship between those two. I don't know that it's a direct relationship. There clearly is. Because the longer someone has to wait, the more likely it is they will not show up.
They won't show up.
There's definitely that relationship. So the more rapid you bring people in, the more effective, the better your response rate is. That is true. When I have talked to Culpeper, when they said, well, if we had extra money to spend, we would not spend it in the general population. We're going to zero in on our probation and parole and jails, where they saw a priority. And they, we are just kicking off a project with them of funding a clinician who is going to be specifically aimed at services to individuals coming out of jail. The priority being to provide and get them access to services so they don't get reincarcerated, which is one of the cost numbers for them that they were looking at. And individuals coming out of jail, if they have to wait to get into service, they tend not to come. If they have to wait, tend to get in trouble, not take medications, and end up back into the jail. So their effort in Culpeper will be interesting next year. I'll let you know how it goes. That's where they're aiming some money to help make it.
Just reducing reincarceration rates?
Primarily, yes. Yes, sir. Interesting. So you get a lot of differences depending on the county government that you're talking to. I thought y'all would be. We are collaborating with local law enforcement. The General Assembly, if you watched, did fund what are called crisis intervention assessment centers. And these help your local law enforcement officials. It gives them a place where they can hand off the custody of someone in an emergency custody situation so that our folks can evaluate. And they don't have to wait in the emergency room while it takes place. That's what happens now, as a matter of fact. So we are working with all local law enforcement departments to see if our region can compete next year for some of these funds. I hope we can. This is not something that if.
You see, this is something that you might do at the regional jail?
It, it would not apply as much to the regional jail. This would be a freestanding assessment center where an individual and perhaps some of their family members can be, have a good place to stay. It's not an emergency room setting, so it's not like a medical setting. Our staff can be there to do the evaluation they need to do and arrange for hospitalization if they need to. If the person is not hospitalized or TDO, they have brief counseling with the family and they can go home. If they are hospitalized, then they can go into an emergency room, get medically cleared, and go to the hospital. Now, all that takes place in the emergency room. And it's just not an ideal setting for those. I don't have to tell you, you can, it's not an ideal setting for law enforcement officials, people in handcuffs.
An ideal setting for any?
Yes, sir. So it's aimed at improving that environment for something to take place. The slide fifteen gives you a picture of emergency mental health evaluations by locality. These are conducted primarily in our offices and in emergency rooms. There are a few occasions where these are done in sheriff's departments, but most of these are done either in our offices during working hours or in an emergency room after hours. This gives you a few of the numbers about the number of people who your law enforcement officials are bringing in for an evaluation by our staff. And then how many of those, I don't have it broken by county, are hospitalized in our region each year as a byproduct of that. It's a lot of traffic, so not a problem. I'll move through these quickly. This gives you a snapshot of the, kind of the larger picture of our funding situation and where the big movers are on there. You can see on this revenue pie chart, fees, big piece of the pie. And then state general funds, federal, and on from there. And as I indicated, growth in revenues was flat to nominal. Just give you a little breakdown on the fee. We are and do rely on the Virginia Medicaid program extensively, as a matter of fact, for funding of many of the services that we provide, as is shown here. Again, I give you a little snapshot of the expenses by the activities of our agency.
Step back on the Medicaid. Are your reimbursement rates on that holding up with your costs?
It depends on the service. The general answer would be no. But there are some services where I would say, yes, it's holding as own. So under the Community Services Board, we provide probably a dozen Medicaid-funded separate services. Many of those are viable funding sources and can, if rigidly managed, can kind of hold their own to meet a lot of local community needs. There are some that just don't do it. They're not, they're inadequate for the needs that you have. So it, and I'll draw one example of where it's inadequate that kind of demonstrates it well. And that is probably an example you wouldn't expect, and that is in physician reimbursement for psychiatric care. It's pathetic in terms of physicians. The percentage of reimbursement to pay for what we have to pay for a full-time physician on our staff is around thirty-five percent. We're having to fund the balance of sixty-five percent of a physician comp. So it gives you, now, there are other examples of Medicaid-funded services where we can just about cover. If we run it correctly, we can just about cover cost. But as you can see, this physician-directed Medicaid funding coming in here, I mean, it's a, it's pathetic. It's almost not worth the trouble of the billing, to be honest with you. So it varies a lot, Mr. Frame, in terms of the service. And just as a case in point, to the extent that reimbursement sources don't cover that service, then we identify other local monies, other sources of money to pay for it. Then there's a slide on budget categories. Not surprising, personnel is the biggest piece of the pie. And then on from there, kind of common budget categories. Personnel number, we have about, almost four hundred staff. Works out to, in fiscal fifteen, about three hundred and twenty full-time equivalent staff. A slight growth in staff this year primarily related to the opening of the group homes, as a matter of fact. We actually reduced in some areas and expanded in some areas in this year. Personnel reduction in force summary, prepared this for our board, gives you a little snapshot of what we did, a total of twenty.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe you don't have this. If you're talking about an individual in a group home with a nominal providing services, some, you know, do you have an idea what that costs per person per month or some, is there any?
Yes, I do, as a matter of fact. The, in our existing, we operate now nine group homes in the region. And that doesn't include the two that we will open. And among those nine group homes, the cost per year, let's just use that. The cost per year will range from a low of seventy thousand per individual per year to a high of maybe one-ten, one-fifteen. So depending on the level of care and the staffing demands on the program, for the two new programs that we're opening, which are for individuals with higher levels of need, with more physical assistance needs, the cost is approaching one-fifty to one-sixty a year per person, per house. So to give you a frame of reference in comparison, state facility costs are around two-fifty to two-sixty. So that's the larger story of what the state's trying to accomplish.
Okay.
This gives you the personnel reduction summary. This gives you, we are both here area agency on aging and the Community Services Board. This shows clearly the Community Services Board activity is the biggest part of our budget. Both activities very important in terms of what we do for local governments. This is an aggregate slide on the number of people served in the region. Little snapshot of local tax situation. Thank you for your ongoing and continued support in local taxes. The supplement over on the last column gives you the supplemental funding provided by three localities for the projects that they're asking us to work with them on.
Back to your reduction in force.
Yes, sir.
You, I'm looking at two-fourteen, you got three hundred and fourteen full-time equivalents, two-fifteen, you've got three hundred and twenty. You're talking about a reduction in force?
Yes. What we did, we eliminated twenty encumbered physicians. I laid off twenty staff, is what that means. And we hired, some of these recycled, not all of them. We've hired probably thirty people in the last four months for the two group homes that we're opening. So at the one place in parts of our agency with funding constraints and demands beyond what we could meet, we were having reductions take place. The other place in the agency in group homes where we have funding, where Medicaid is paying for a viable service, for example, we are actually, have been in a hiring activity. Some of those people affected through the reduction moved into the residential programs, not all. So that, I hate to, I don't want to make this sound, I don't want to dress this up any, this was a difficult transition.
Sure, I understand.
But we did it at such a time that some individuals who were interested were able to move into other positions in the agency.
When I'm looking at Medicaid reimbursement for the homes, what, how much are we getting in that? I mean, if you're talking, it's running from seventy to a hundred and ten K.
Yes, sir.
What is, what's Medicaid reimbursing on that?
That's Medicaid money. That is, that is one hundred percent Medicaid.
One hundred percent Medicaid.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is all.
So even for the ones that are up to a hundred and fifty where they have special services, that's all Medicaid reimbursed?
Yes, sir. That is a one hundred percent Medicaid funded service.
Sliding scale based on the individual needs of the.
Well, what it is in the group homes is a, is an eligibility criterion coming in. These are adults with severe intellectual disabilities who qualify under Virginia's Medicaid waiver program. And that program pays for residential care, and that's where that money comes from.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's what a relief, huh? You didn't want?
Doesn't do that for long term. I can assure you that.
That's a good question. I didn't understand where it was coming from.
You can see where the question is coming from.
Yes, sir.
We have another context that we can put this in.
But what we're looking for, I want to certainly answer any questions that you may have. There's an action item later on in yours, and you'll be asked to pass a resolution of your opportunity to see this and ask questions. And just thank you for your support. I enjoy working with this board. Y'all always active, ask good questions, and often take a real interest in what we're doing here for your citizens. And so I appreciate the value you place on the services we're providing. Any questions for me?
The, I understand the VA was going into a big hiring thing to deal with, somebody said something like forty-five hundred people to, to, to cover the post-traumatic stress and traumatic brain injuries. And has that had any impact yet? Have you seen that in terms of the availability of, of people to fill the positions we have?
It hasn't had any impact on the workforce side for us here locally. The VA centers, as y'all well know, we have none geographically located in our area, so we're not a magnet for that. I'm not competing with them in real terms for professional staff. We do participate in what's called the Virginia Wounded Warriors Program. We get some funding from that, as a matter of fact, that helps pay for services in our offices for veterans in this region.
Oh, really?
It is a small activity, but that's why I didn't even make it on the slideshow. But we do, and are active participants in that, pays for therapy, visits to the doctor, and support for the family. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that finishes the public appearances. Next, we have public comment. Does anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers signed up.
Okay.
The first one is Ellen Wren, one-one-one-five-one, Monford Road.
Hi. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I'm here concerning the Spectra pipeline and would like to ask support of y'all in trying to deal with Spectra to get them to, number one, hold some sort of public hearing meeting where there is a Q and A to let the residents know exactly the proposed line for the pipeline. And there's certainly a lot of safety issues and concerns. And I know that there are a lot of people that have questions. I do feel that their proposed line is not in the best location at this point. Anyone that's going to have this line come to their property is going to have issues, you know, just because they don't want their property disturbed or devalued or, you know, have a concern for safety. The several issues that, that I feel are a concern are the water supply with Rapidan and the fact that they want to cross through there or run through streams. I know of people who have had issues with pipelines coming through farms as far as their livestock is concerned. I know one person who had to sell his property because of the noise and the vibration going through the ground. It scared the cattle that he was raising, and he had to sell the property and move to a different place. It affects income for people in that situation, and that's a big concern. Certainly, the historic sites that we have through here, Montpelier, so many places that are on the National Historic Registry. A lot of those are in easements as well. The concern over the earthquake is a big deal for me. I don't feel that it's the safest line because they're going through Gordonsville, and they're going to be within, they have a compression site that's actually going to be within twelve or fifteen miles of the epicenter of the two thousand and eleven earthquake. And we're still continuing to get earthquakes, maybe not of that magnitude, but there was a three-point-two just a few weeks ago. So it's not, the land isn't quiet, and it's, you know, it's still settling. So those are just a few things that I wanted to throw out. But I do know that Nelson County has come up, they have gone, their Board of Supervisors has basically told Spectra that they will not allow surveying in their county until, unless, of course, there's a landowner that has already given them permission to do so. But until Spectra comes up with some sort of meeting to give a particular line for this path of the pipeline through Orange County and to give the landowners an opportunity to do, you know, to be, to throw out questions and have answers and go from there. But I certainly know that there, there are a lot of historic properties that they're going through or that they propose to go through. Is this something that y'all can step forward on and act on the behalf of the residents of Orange County? And just, we're not asking you to put a stop on anything, but just to give the landowners the opportunity to get, meet with Spectra and understand exactly what their proposal is, because it's very unclear at this point.
That's something we'll be discussing later.
Okay. Will this be on the agenda in the future? That we, you know, that we can?
Did I forget to add it on tonight?
I don't believe it's on here.
No, it wasn't originally.
Right. We were going to get some advice of council.
That's right.
Okay.
It'll be on the next agenda. Meeting session and then we'll come out because of the large in weighing. Meeting session, and then we'll come out because of the, the large and weighing federal issues.
I, I can understand.
Preemption issues that are involved.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the second speaker is Carol Hebrins, one-one-two-two-three, Montford Road.
I'm Carol Hebrins. My sister Joan sent you all a letter not too long ago, everybody's nodding, yes, you got it. We are here to ask your support in helping us with the Spectra pipeline. We don't have a District One representative who would normally be here, and we'd be, you know, on his or her back, asking for some assistance here, so we're asking for yours and to help us. We know there are a lot of issues involving the federal and, and everything, but we also are a district, a historic district in Orange County. You have to consider the tourism, the tourism aspect, who's the tourism person? There you go, the tourism aspect of the county and so forth, and this line is supposed to go straight through Montpelier. I know Mr. Goodwin was at the meeting the other day at Montpelier when we had it with the Piedmont Environmental Council. It was a good meeting.
Yes.
People got up and talked, and, you know, everybody voiced concern. So our basic, my basic reason to be here is that we really need, we need your assistance. We don't have someone that we can depend on here. We are depending on you, and there are a lot of people here in the audience from the Spicer Mill, Montpelier area, and we are, we're requesting assistance on this. And every, nobody wants a pipeline through their backyard, but you men, gentlemen, have to know that this pipeline is going through the country's front yard. This is the Civil War, this is the Revolutionary, this is our history, that's what this pipeline is gonna dig up. We have to understand that, and we need assistance from you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that was all the public comment. Okay, move on to board comment.
Just, just one thing, this is something that I guess we don't advertise very well on, is public comment is just that. It's not a time for us to interact with the public when you're speaking. And the past few weeks, we've had a number of times where people have been looking for us to talk to them during their comment period. And it is designed for the public to make their comments, and then the board comments is for us to discuss that or other things. So I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of this, because it seemed to get more and more people, they're trying to get us to be interactive during the public comment.
Yeah, it's really not for that, so.
Right.
This is not a debate.
Exactly, so just wanted people to make sure that they did understand that. We're not, we're not just sitting here stone-faced.
But that doesn't mean we're, that also doesn't mean we're ignoring it either.
Exactly.
It does mean we'll, we'll take it under consideration, it's just, we don't do that in an open forum, and at some point, we will have an open forum. Yeah, well, the other thing, it allows more people to voice their opinion, rather than getting into a little back and forth, so. Okay, well, we have a couple of minutes left, so let's move on then to Action Item seven A. Linda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have Jennifer France here tonight to go over the items that were included in your agenda package. One concerns the EAP that we included in the FY fifteen budget. The other is the item on short-term disability, the possibility of providing that for VRS Plan One and Plan Two employees. Just push the button down to change.
Is your call on up there?
No. Yes, you can do here or page up, page down. Okay, great. Good evening, I also have with me from our office Mary Jones, who's a senior consultant with Digital Benefit Advisors. Normally, I believe you've met Carrie Bartlett, who's been here in front of you before to, to talk about the presentation, part of the presentation that we're gonna highlight here today. As Mr. Duncan from the Communit-, uh, RRCS had indicated, there are a lot of people in the community that need some type of mental health services or those type of services, as well as Orange County employees, obviously, have a need for some of those type of services as well. So that's what we're gonna address tonight, is an employee assistance program that's available, that we would like to have the board consider. We're gonna go through and review the Employee Assistance Program or EAP RFP results, and then review disability options, going back through the short-term disability which was requested by the board.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
You say this was the best option, how many proposals do we actually receive?
For the EAP program?
Uh, yes.
Specifically, we'll go through that, but I believe that there were four different groups that we went through, and that's covered in part of the presentation as well. Just to give a brief highlight, though, the Employee Assistance Programs, obviously, are employee benefit programs. A lot of employers do provide them, they are intended to help employees deal with personnel problems, adversely impacting their job performance, their well-being. Supervisors also, we know that's a key piece for the county, something that you wanted to highlight, is that supervisors may refer employees to the Employee Assistance Program. If they have unacceptable performance or some sort of conduct issues, they will be able to refer them voluntarily, obviously, to the EAP program as well. It is completely confidential, it is avail- available from the employee perspective, but also to the household members of those employees. So it wouldn't just be Orange County employees that have access to that, but their spouses and children, anyone living in their home as well. It would provide needs assessment, help counseling, and referrals for members when they have mental health or any type of emotional issues. We would give manager support training, they do provide training for critical incident, incidents, so that they can better handle those situations. It's generally for short-term counseling and support. For longer-term counseling, they do refer them out into the community to providers, and it would also coordinate with their medical benefits as well on the mental health side. And then the EAP programs typically also can include things like assistance with searching for childcare, elder care, and apartments, et cetera. For your managers, EAP can assist those managers who handle a wide range of performance issues. Workplace drug-free workplace policies, reducing absenteeism, increasing morale, those type of things. They do try to look after the psychological health of the employees, help them with stress management programs, as well as other types of programs. The EAPs help employees develop the skills that they need to cope with all types of work-related stress, and hopefully then that will impact, impact them on the job site. Again, just a highlight of the EAP services that are typically provided. So it doesn't just help them with mental health issues, but also with legal concerns, there are some financial counseling services that are available to them if they need financial assistance, addiction and recovery, those type of services are provided as well.
So what we're saying here is that you've got a, that, uh, there's a, it seems to me, it'd be a wide range of, of different kinds of expertise needed to deal with all these things.
And they can be all provided within the local community with the different providers that are available through the EAP program. So basically what they would do is they can refer them to a telephone consultation person who will work with them. They have unlimited telephone consultations as an employee or as a supervisor. And then they would, if they thought they needed more detailed counseling, they would refer them to a provider out in the community to have ongoing services done.
So let me give you an example, an employee gets a, gets a summons, or he gets a, uh, he gets some legal papers from the, from the sheriff's office. Does that mean he can call them and find out what he's gonna do?
They can give a call to them, they aren't gonna give them specific legal advice like an attorney would, but they can give them some advice as to what they're seeing if they don't understand maybe the summons that they have in front of them. They can refer them to an attorney in the area. There is some limited scope of, you know, advisory.
And so if anybody needed addiction and recovery services, we're not providing that, we're, we're vectoring them to the, so most of, much of this is vectoring people to the appropriate service.
Correct, correct, but it also is for someone who, you know, if I'm on the job and I'm having a difficult situation with one of my coworkers, and I just wanna talk to somebody about my frustrations with them, I don't wanna obviously go to my boss or whatever, I want it to be confidential. And I'm having a lot of stress related to that, you can call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, talk with somebody on the phone. They can walk you through scenarios that you might be able to, to use in your workplace to deal with a difficult coworker, that sort of thing. They can do that on the phone without any cost to that. If it was something more detailed, you know, if they were dealing with more mental health issues, they may refer them to a counselor, psychologist, psychiatrist in the community, then that would coordinate with their medical benefits at that point.
The, the EAP service is, triage is essentially what the employee will have. And there are built-in to Optima's for face-to-face visits if they're referred to a specific counselor and such, and then also the coordination of medical benefits in that, in that situation.
How would they get involved in, let's say, a, uh, an employee supervisor issue?
There will, they can provide initial training, obviously, and, and we would like to have them do that. Optima would come in and do initial training with the supervisors as needed to go over dealing with difficult situations, that sort of thing.
That would be a part of this program?
That would be a part of this program, yes. On the slide that I have up in front of you, it does give a quick summary. So they do have unlimited telephone consultations, and this is, I'm sorry, I don't remember what slide, it looks like slide nine, maybe. Yes, slide nine. They do have unlimited telephone consultations at no cost to the employee. They do get four face-to-face visits, so if they do refer them out into the community to a provider, to a psychologist, psychiatrist, that's part of their network, they would get four of those visits at no additional cost. Then anything beyond that, obviously, it would roll into their medical benefits. They do have some legal referrals, and they have discounted fees for attorneys that they would refer them to that are in the community as well.
Let me, uh, just, if I could, I think one of the things that when, when I was developing the proposed budget, after talking with our, our law enforcement, uh, fire and EMS, tend to be the functions that employees are faced with in nine-one-one, stressors that are beyond what we would in the nine-five world, and oftentimes their ability to cope with some horrific events. The CAP service and Opta in particular is very much geared for dealing with that type of stressful workplace environment. These other ancillary services, legal referrals, childcare and things are, are more of a supplemental services, and I think the core here is being able to provide stress management for our fire, our first responders, and then also for our supervisors, particularly the frontline supervisors. I've personally had to, uh, had a number of times where you have a good valued employee that may be going through some domestic situations at home, financial situations, care-dependent parents, and, and their worker's suffering, but you want them to be a good employee, and this is an ability to, to give them some options through a third party in a confidential setting that would help them navigate through those issues. The other real main point of the EAP is if you have a supervisor employee or employee-employee conflict, and the ability to refer conflict management to an EAP service for those employees or supervisor and employee to be able to work through those issues, either through a way that overcomes the conflict and manages it going forward, or it comes to where there needs to be perhaps an involuntary separation, and then that gives you in the human resources and certainly in a legal way that you've done some, some due diligence trying to resolve the, the conflict and manage my, manage at least the organization's risk in my situation. So I just wanted to kind of zero in at least what I was seeing.
So what you're saying is those two areas are the predominant, the rest of it is more referral?
Yes, sir.
The, the rest of it's the benefit of having it, those are the, the true needs of having it.
Yeah, we want.
Critical part.
Exactly, we wanted to make sure that it did have that workplace trauma response program in there, 'cause we knew that that was a key component for the county, as well as the, the other services. Just to give you a quick highlight on Optima, they do provide EAP services for more than thirty-seven hundred public and private sector clients throughout Virginia, Washington DC, Maryland, North Carolina, West Virginia. They did provide us with a three-year rate guarantee for the county, which is, which is excellent. They do, as I mentioned, provide twenty-four-seven access. They do have fifty-six practice locations in Orange County and its surrounding area. So if they do refer somebody to a counselor or for services, you can be sure that they have a, a good network in Orange County for those employees. And then this gives you a great example on slide eleven of exactly what Mr. David was talking about in terms of they do have specialty programs related to job pressure and safety for police, fire, sheriff. They have, for example, dealing with difficult citizens that will.
Maybe we oughta take that.
That will teach you or the police and fire and EMS and, and nine-one-one employees how to defuse an angry citizen, et cetera.
Can you back up one slide, please?
Sure.
Of those fifty-six locations? How many of them are in Orange County?
I will be honest with you, I don't know, I can find out for you, though.
Because when, when the different ones that are listed there, I'm willing to bet that Charlottesville and Fredericksburg probably have fifty-three of them. The other three are spread between the rest of us.
I will def- I will definitely check.
Right, and that does, that does have an effect as far as, you know, people utilizing the EAP, whether it's convenient or not, because if it's not convenient, employees tend not to utilize it as much.
Mr. Crozier, that was, Glenda and I were the ones that worked with Digital Benefits with Carrie to go through the proposals, and that precisely was one of my questions for that very reason. The other proposers didn't, I didn't get a comfort level, but they were even as, as logistically positioned as Optima. In fact, one of them was mostly enrichment, and that just was not going to be real viable.
If there aren't any other questions on the EAP program, we did, again, we do recommend Optima for that service. There is more information in there in terms of the pricing, did you want me to go back through that? I was gonna skip through that.
Optima, we, we're, and I think we were looking at combining with the schools and felt that that was certainly within our budget amount for sure, and was, was the best value as well as point of service.
That's a question I have, have we had a discussion with the school system about this program, and we know their level of interest and?
They are interested in it, we haven't presented to them officially at this point. But we did get, as Mr. David mentioned, we did get quotes on both just the county level, just the school level, and then combined.
But we, I'm pretty confident, given their level of interest in me, that they budget for it like we, and I feel pretty confident.
You say they did budget?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
It was a discussion earlier, we just have not presented them with the final results yet.
I just wondered whether this is one of these, they were very good, but we, we were gonna pay for it.
Well, I know they budgeted for it, that was my question.
Eventually, anyway.
Uh, yeah, that's.
Whether it's gonna be in their budget.
The question really is, have we gotten to the point where they're prepared to use the same provider as we use? And I guess they haven't.
We haven't gotten through.
They haven't gone through this with them yet, okay.
But we're pretty, I think we're all very, and they're aware of what's come back, I think we're all aligned on the same page.
And they have the same geographic concerns and things, as you did as well, so we would expect that that's something that they would go with as well.
So we did get four bids on this?
We did, from Anthem, Inova, Optima, and Reach.
Okay, and I suspect that the rates on the other providers are not public.
It was a combination of the rates are, were not where they needed to be in terms of your budgeting, as well as the limitations in terms of the geographic providers, that was the key. Okay, then, moving on to the STD and LTD, Carrie evidently presented to the board in March regarding the disability for the non-hybrid or legacy employees, and at that point in time, the board had approved the LTD benefit for a ninety-day elimination period. But you also wanted to see STD options that could be paired with the LTD plan. Uh, there are seventy-eight employees, or forty-four point eight percent that have zero to ninety-six hours with an average of fifty-two hours, which equates to about six point five days of sick time. As you probably are aware, after January first of twenty-fourteen, new hires were automatically enrolled in that hybrid plan, which gives them employer-paid short-term disability and long-term disability. But anyone hired prior to January first would be a legacy employee, um, not eligible for that. So today, going forward, if one of those legacy employees would become ill or injured, they'd have to use all their sick and vacation time.
Do you, your second bullet there raises a question. It, it says an employee that does not move into the hybrid plan. Is, is there in fact an option for people, for the legacy employees to move to the hybrid plan?
It was.
It was.
They did have an option, the, um, legacy employees had an option to opt into the hybrid plan as well.
But that, that, that option has expired past, no longer available, what it?
Yeah, well, truth be told, it didn't make a lot of sense for a lot of employees to do that, the way the plan was set up through the VRS program. Um, which is why employers such as yourself are looking to bring an alternate solution to the legacy employees as a potential solution.
Okay. I take it we had no one that opted to switch?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, I mean, Glenda now.
I don't believe that there were any.
Okay.
I mean, it's not, I'm just, the, the hybrid retirement plan, um, you know, has the component of, uh, being able to direct your, your investment. And, just generally speaking, I think it, it is not, um, as attractive to most people as the defined benefit plan that is Plan One and Plan Two, so.
Sure.
So, so they opted out not necessarily because of the, the disability aspect, but because of the, of the basic retirement, uh, plan?
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, thank you, I, I just, that struck me as something I wasn't aware of.
So on that last bullet point, obviously, if a hybrid employee were to go out for the same reason, they would have their income replaced at sixty to a hundred percent for STD and sixty percent for LTD, whereas, um, the other, the legacy employees would not have that benefit available. So we did conduct a formal RFP.
How, how long is the short, uh, the short-term?
The short-term disability, I believe, um-
Fourteen to nine.
We propose to do it for eleven weeks.
It, it, it would be backwards on to your LTD. So your LTD, the long-term disability kicks in after ninety days of being out of work, where the short-term disability is gonna bridge that gap, basically thirteen weeks.
Right.
All right, and, uh, and if somebody, uh, if somebody had, uh, accumulated their maximum sick days, they wouldn't have ninety days worth of sick days?
Correct. Most people would not.
How many, how many, uh, what is our limit on how many they could accumulate?
There's no cap.
That would be seven hundred and twenty hours, that's, that's a whole lot of sick time.
Yes, sir.
We have some employees with over a thousand.
Yep.
So we did get options from two companies, the Standard and Assurant. Um, all of the other carriers basically declined because you have a closed class of employees in that, um, legacy, uh, group. Anybody, obviously, that's new employees coming in would be part of the other program. Um, so we did get quotes from two. We've suggested to go with the Standard, um, with a fourteen-day, what they call a, elimination period. Um, so they'd have to be disabled for fourteen days before the benefits would kick in. It would be a sixty percent benefit for them. Um, the long-term disability, a- as Mary mentioned, starts at ninety days. This slide, slides, uh, fifteen shows you the cost breakdown, terms of annual cost, and then terms of total annual cost per employee. The employee, there are, um, that would be for the employer-paid option. We did provide a, a voluntary option as well, in case you were interested in looking at that. That would be an option where at least twenty-five percent of the employees or forty-eight total would need to elect coverage in order to, for it to be offered. Not sure that you would get that level of participation, um, but we did want to show you that as an option if the, um, employer-paid piece was not something that you wanted to do.
I, I'm gonna back up to slide fifteen, um, just to kind of go over the employer option, just so that you understand the differences between those two options there. Um, the first option, uh, there's an elimination period that somebody has to be out. So it's a period of time that somebody has to be out of work before the benefit will actually kick in, or the benefit will start paying. So that first option, that middle column, um, illustrates where somebody has to be out for seven days, whether it be for an illness or an accident. Where the second option, um, illustrates them having to be out fourteen days. Uh, so basically, they'll be out fourteen days and the benefit would kick in on the fifteenth day for an accident or an illness. Based off of your sick time accumulation for your employees, you know, I, I would be comfortable in saying that you could probably go with a fourteen-day elimination versus a seven-day elimination, uh, for your folks.
What, what are the cr- what are the criteria? I mean, I, sick leave they can use for virtually any need of their own choosing. Does the, uh, fourteen-day qualification period, does, does that require several levels of doctors' approval? Who, who does the evaluation and determine whether they're eligible?
The Standard would do that, and so if you would elect to go with the Standard, they would evaluate the, they, 'cause they would get information from the employee directly, they would collect information directly from the county, and they would also get a statement from the physician. They'll take all that data and they're gonna assess it to determine that they truly qualify for the disability. And they in turn would, um, pay the claims and let you know that this, you know, Mary Jones, for example, does qualify for disability. And then they'll start payment.
And what is their criteria?
It would have to be a true medical disability, um-
That they physically can't work.
That they physically are not able to work.
Uh, about mental?
That could be, uh, part of that as well. If they are unable to perform their duties because of a, a mental health situation, that, um, could be part of the disability plan as well.
Is that, is that in this plan, the mental disability?
Yes, yes, it's included in there. Mm-hmm. It's treated as any other medical condition.
We gotta treat them the same now, anyway, don't we?
That's true.
Do, do we have any, uh, any sense of, uh, who is this? Is this Standard, is it?
This is the Standard that we've recommended, yes.
Do we have any sense of their, uh, history with respect to claims, approval, denial, et cetera, I mean, any?
We do.
We've, we've used them.
Yeah, they, they actually, they are an A-plus carrier, um, and they actually are the carrier of choice for, um, the municipalities, counties and school systems that opted out of the state plan. They are the carrier of choice for the hybrid employees, if you will. So they have a lot of familiarity with your program specifically. So from an administration standpoint, it actually ends up being a little more seamless for your folks the way it piggybacks onto, um, how the hybrid plan works.
Okay.
So again, you've already approved the LTD coverage for the county. Um, if you are so inclined, you could elect to offer the STD coverage either as an employer-paid benefit, a voluntary benefit, or not at all. Um, and if you, we will get back to you with the additional, um, items that you had questions on, and if you have anything else, please let us know.
Actually, I have a question, uh, Brian, on your, on your cover letter, or actually, I guess it was from Glenda. Um, your, your last full sentence, I guess I would say, recurring revenues have been identified an amount to fund approximately twenty-seven. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? What, what is that?
Actually, uh, I'm getting more comfortable in this role because I was already on that memo and figured one of the board members would ask how we're going to pay for this, so, um, I'll call Glenda.
That's the right answer.
Let's, 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 uh, let's, uh, bifurcate this and, and from the short-term disability. We could get a, 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 a motion to approve Optima as our EAP provider and then authorize, uh, myself, uh, and county staff to do those things necessary to secure their services.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll, I'll make that motion for the EAP.
To, uh, approve the, uh, Optima EAP and, uh, authorize the county administrator and staff to do those things necessary to secure their services.
I would secondly, okay, EAP. We have a motion, a, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those are good programs, I have some experience with, they really work.
That, that, thank you. Uh, now on this, uh, I almost am there, but I'm gonna let Glenda about, we've identified enough money to carry us through FY fifteen.
Right.
We've gotten probably eighty percent of the way there for ongoing.
Right.
We'd have to come up with some new money to, to make, so there is new money involved with this.
Right. There was enough, um, in the budget between what we were saving on the EAP and what we expect, um, to save in the reserve that we had for the, um, the original, um, hybrid employees', uh, short and long-term disability plan to fund, uh, the, the short-term disability for legacy employees for this year. And, uh, but we wanted-
Beginning in October.
Beginning in October.
Okay, got that.
But the ongoing, the recurring revenues are roughly twenty-seven thousand, and the cost of this plan is thirty-four, so we wanted to point out that that would be something additional we'd need to fund.
What's the twenty-seven? That's what I, that was my question. We're, you say recurring revenues, what, what, explain that to me.
I just mean that, it, I mean in recurring revenues that it's built into the FY fifteen budget.
That we can redirect.
But we are not going to need it based on the other prices that have come in, so that could be-
Well, so it's, it's really a savings from, from your projections, okay.
Exactly.
Those savings are in what areas?
Um, the, the short and long-term disability for hybrid employees, the long-term disability for legacy employees that you've already approved, and the EAP plan.
Okay, so th- these are all personnel, uh, things that we, we experience savings on?
Right.
Human resources, yes, sir.
And how much more do we need than we have of those savings beyond that?
The delta of thirty-four, five and twenty-seven, five, seven thousand.
About eight thousand dollars. You don't need it for FY fifteen, but, um, to be able to fund it again in FY sixteen, that, that would be what you'd be looking for.
Right, if you commit today, I will have to include with no choice but an additional seven, about seventy thousand dollars going forward, and that becomes a requirement.
Well, that's assuming the rates are.
Uh, we're gonna have to deal with any, any new rates, uh, later on, or any, any, any personnel costs we have.
Re- the, the twenty-seven, five is a bit of a soft number.
Yes, sir.
Because we don't know where rates are gonna be going forward. It could, it could be larger, it could be smaller, depending on what, where we stand from a rate standpoint.
I, I also have to, to say, I mean, this is a generous benefit for the small university employees that it's been offering to. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's, there is some cost.
Yeah.
But what is the, I mean, for the people who are currently, the legacy employees, what's their, I mean, they got the, uh, what are their options? What's their structure now, uh, for the legacy, in terms of disability? They've got, they've got, whatever their sick days are, and where does the, uh-
They've got their sick and vacation, and they have to exhaust both of those before they can apply to the sick leave bank, which is donated leave from other employees.
But assuming they don't have any sick leave bank, then, uh, if they're permanently disabled, how does that then get funded?
Your long-term disability that we approved back in March will kick in at ninety days. But between the time that they run out of sick and vacation, and if they have no sick leave bank, then that ninety days. And there are a lot of people in that situation that would have a gap with no income at all.
But the legacy, but the new employees, the hybrid, uh-
They would have sixty percent.
We were required to provide the STD and LTD.
Yeah, we, we already do it for some, I understand.
But didn't we, didn't we cap the sick leave, though? I mean, there was an offset to some extent, I've forgotten it.
We did make, the, um, hybrid employees are earning the PTO, the paid time off, rather than having a separate sick and annual leave.
Part of the proposal to cap the sick leave for the legacy employees, if we, if we would do this?
If we adopt this?
I mean, it seems to me that-
Well, that is, you know, that's something that was discussed in March, um, whether or not we should look at doing that.
I guess the other question I have is, is there, much as we have a somewhat shared cost for health insurance, are there any organizations that are sharing, I, I know of one, actually, but any municipal organizations that are sharing in the cost of short-term disability such that the employee makes an election and makes at least some contribution to?
That's what this, uh, was their-
Now, this is the county pay, this proposal is, we pay it all.
No, but, yeah, but there was, you had one slide there that showed the, the employee pay it all.
Yes, there was one voluntary option where just the employee pays a hundred percent of the premium.
What I'm talking about is a sharing.
You can choose to cost share. If you cost share with the employee, you would have to abide by, um, the voluntary rates, 'cause you still can't force an employee to participate if they're kicking in any premium. So the, the voluntary rates would hold true in that scenario as well.
And they're quite a bit more expensive.
Yes.
And because we have a small university to begin with, if we pay a hundred percent of the premium, then the Standard feels pretty good about that scenario versus the number of folks that would either partially or completely bond in a voluntary sense.
You might only be insuring eight employees or something if you had the bond, if you had a share, cost share.
I, I guess I would like to see, sort of the next, taking this information and to the next step and, and, uh, sort of firming up that recurring revenue number a little bit so we could see what that's like. But also, uh, some analysis and thought given as to what we would do, uh, with respect to things like sick leave capping or whatever for the legacy employees. It seems to me that there are a number of pieces of this that have to-
I mean, if we're, we're gonna do the same thing in terms of STD and LTD, we think we should be doing the same thing with regard to sick leave and vacation time.
But it's, it's difficult, because if there are people with a thou- have a thousand hours of bank sick leave, uh, I mean, you're likely to take it away from them, uh, so how do you handle it? So I, th- th- this is not a straightforward implementation, it seems to me, that we, we need a little bit of, of thought and discussion given to issues like, and there, and there are probably others, but at least, at least those two.
Well, and one thing to consider, um, Glenda had, um, mentioned that if you were to package the LTD, um, and STD in the hybrid employee premiums, come down by three cents per hundred, per hundred. Those rates are locked in for three years. Um, so there are, that savings, we know for sure, is on the table for three years. Um, the one thing that we need to clarify with Standard for the employer-paid short-term disability option, I believe those rates are capped for two years, but I just need to confirm that.
Yeah. Uh, we, th- those are the kind of things we need to know and-
Right.
And see, how real the seven thousand is, is, is it really, you know, is it, is it seven, or is the window open such that it could be something greater than that?
So you would have a motion to table this until we get more information at the next meeting?
That's my motion.
If, or, if we can come back, but if we can make it, but we may not be able to make it by the next meeting. How, how about if I, if I understand the direction the board is, now that we know pricing is to understand better, at least, uh, the contingencies on this recurring revenue of sources of funds. And two, how would this work in implementing some type of fixed or capped sick leave accrual, I mean, to-
Some, some equitable adjustments between the two classes of employees.
And, and whether there's an ability to, uh, to get everybody back to kind of the, the, the same level by maybe cashing out, uh, some of the accrued sick leave or-
Either that, or it's a cap that they can't accrue.
Beyond.
Beyond. Uh, it, it, I, it'd probably be fairly costly to, for the ones that do have that excessive amount.
But if you cap them at their, at their max now, so they, they have to use what they've got cumu- accumulating in the future.
Right, right. Rather than taking it away from them.
That's another possibility.
Just let them stop earning it.
We don't need to table this, we just don't need to take an action.
Yeah, I, I mean, just don't-
We'll, we'll come back with, I, I think, I've got a general direction of what, what to come back with. And as soon as we prepare that additional information, we'll bring it back. I, I'm pretty confident we can do it by the end of August.
But I think rather than table it and put a date on it, let's just not take any action and-
Yeah.
And you can do what you need to do.
You'll come back when you're ready.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we need to move into closed, because we have to be back at seven.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such litigation, consultation in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating a party's public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring a provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, uh, A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion of the forceful matter in closed meeting.
Tomoos.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting? Roll call.
Mr. Krasner?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Okay, before we start the public hearing, I want to do one thing real quick. That was action item seven B, the approval of the environmental assessment for runway twenty-six, uh, since Kurt is not-
Kurt is not yet back yet. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of board, uh, Mr. Hildervan's working on phase three was slated to begin in FY twenty fifteen. Federal Aviation Administration has determined that an environmental assessment short form, form will need to be performed prior to using any more federal funds for, uh, easement acquisitions. This is substantially has increased the cost of this work, uh, consulting work to about now, uh, estimated two hundred and ten thousand. In order to do that work, we have to hire, uh, a, a, a firm to look, to make sure, uh, that that is in line with the amount of work that needs to be done. So with that, uh, he is recommending that, uh, the Board of Supervisors authorize staff, uh, to do the following things, submit grant, the grant applications to the FAA and the Virginia Department of Aviation for an environmental assessment short form for runway, uh, twenty-six, two, accept and execute grant office from the FAA and Department of Aviation for environmental assessment short form for runway twenty-six, and execute amendment number twelve for environmental assessment short form ru- runway twenty-six and then not, not to exceed the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. All actions to be contingent on grant availability and approval of the county attorney as to form.
So moved. Second. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done. All right, so Kurt shows up, tell him he can go home. Uh, with that, it is now seven o'clock, so we will start for the public hearing. Once again, Josh is doing all the work.
Once again. We have one, um, public hearing this evening. That's for SUP fourteen dash zero three. Just for Randy's Auto Service and Towing. This is actually an amendment of the original SUP, which was, um, approved in two thousand and six. It was case number oh six dash zero three. Um, it's for tax map parcel sixty dash forty-five D, which is five acres in size. The property is owned agricultural and identified as A two on the recommended land use map of our most recent comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission took this case up at their June nineteenth meeting. Um, they did have some brief discussion and they did recommend approval with a set of conditions, um, with minor changes to the staff proposed conditions, which are namely to one and two. Essentially, the first condition, the, the Planning Commission recommended was that the, um, applicant's vehicles be constrained to the north side of the property, which would be the north of the, um, garage building. Uh, the second one is that they would be limited to fifty vehicles on site for storage for compensatory services. Um, the third condition was related to the, it's actually an extension of the original buffering and landscaping condition. It was on the original SUP, um, but basically they have to maintain a, a buffer along the sides of the property that are adjacent to the garage. And the fourth was that the, um, permit will not expire, which is an expiration clause in the zoning ordinance. Um, I know that was really brief, but happy to entertain any questions.
Did you, uh, get a response from V dot? I didn't see one in the package. I read about, about one, but I didn't actually see it. Do you recall what they're?
They took a look at the entrance to the property. They said it was satisfactory. It met their conditions.
Okay.
Um, and anything that they had to impose, they said it was fine. But that's all they looked at was the entrance.
Right. All the way out to, uh, uh, six twenty-nine?
That was my understanding, that, the actual connection of the applicant's driveway to Pomocky Lane and then that connection out to, um, whatever that main, that state route was.
Lower Road.
Yeah, it was lower.
Right, okay.
Any other questions for Josh? Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Um, do we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Randy Hoffman. I own Randy's Auto Service and Towing. Appreciate y'all taking the time and reviewing the application that I submitted to y'all. And the reason for doing so is I just need the capacity for the cars to increase. And far as the building goes, I need to expand a little bit so I don't have to be out in the par- parking lot trying to work, you know, when I get the shop full while I'm waiting on parts and stuff. And, uh, I need some storage space, uh, to put parts and to store some oil and stuff like that that I need when I change oil and service vehicles and stuff like that. It's just hard to, you know, try to do it all out of just three bays, uh, when you, I have to buy tools every day, you know, to try to keep up and stuff. So that's the biggest thing, uh, while I'm submitting this application, is so I can span my business a little bit, you know. Um, I know it's probably gonna make my taxes go up, but, you know, that's, that's okay too. I have to do what I have to do. So I just appreciate y'all taking the time and reviewing it and approving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. In that case, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have speakers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cameron. We have five speakers currently signed up to speak. The first is V. Ray Jones, one eight, one four, zero, Zachary Taylor Highway.
Okay. I would ask that y'all try to limit yourselves to about five minutes or so.
Chairman and board members, good evening. My name is Ray Jones. I represent the two things. North Pomocky Baptist Church, which is joining the property, being a trustee since nineteen sixty-six and for myself personally, if I'm being and living in the district. I am a councilman with the other trustee of the church. No one has a problem with this application. They're all in favor of it. The, uh, Mr. Hoffman is giving a good service, keeps one of the neatest garages I've ever seen. Sometimes I, just model it how clean he keeps it in the exterior with the parking of the vehicles and with the vehicles inside the building that he works on. He provides a good service to the community and, uh, I hope you can look favorable at it because I think if anything, if he can grow a little in the business, which we all hope to, that he can help a little bit here and there without any employment problems and give us a little more employment. But I highly recommend approval of this application. And as I stated, yeah, with the years he's been there, the church has had no problems with his operation and he keeps a good clean business and I hope you can see fit to approve his application. Thank you. That you have questions to make.
Thank you, Ray.
Next speaker is Marie Weaver, one four, six eight, zero, Porterfield Drive.
Good evening. Um, first I want to ask you if everyone received my packet that I submitted? Everyone got it? Okay. Um, we have a lot of concerns about this SUP permit. Um, I've listed quite a few items. I don't know if you want me to go over and read them all or if you guys have had time to, to read them yourselves.
No, we, we read them.
Uh, we, we also, you know, we submitted a petition with over, over thirty-some signatures from people and landowners from around the area. And they all are in agreement with us that they wish that this SUP not be amended. They want it to either remain the way it is or just revoke it. Um, you know, we have a lot of concerns. I've listed a lot of them. And I don't quite understand the, uh, the ordinance. I've, I've read over your ordinance, but I don't quite understand your definitions of junkyard, automobile graveyard, and public garage. To me, they're each different. And public garage doesn't cover junkyard and automobile graveyard, but that seems like that's what's going on there. I mean, I don't know of any other garage that needs to have that many vehicles on their lot at one time. I counted the other day, just coming up route, uh, twenty from Fredericksburg, there were like seven automobile repair shops off of twenty. And I happened to notice none of them had this many vehicles, you know, around their shop. So I don't really understand why he needs this many vehicles. He has a third bay there that he doesn't use. In all the years that I was there, he never used that third bay. So if he needs the room, he needs to use his third bay. And if he needs to expand, then he's out of room and he needs to go and look for some commercial land because we are agriculture down there. I mean, you're destroying the agricultural property down there. We have to ride by that. We have to look at that. No one else does. We do. We have to look at that. And you say that it's screened. It is not screened from our view. No one wants to talk about that bus that sits there that now has some new writing on it since the last meeting. You know, children write on walls in the bathroom. I mean, really? But the county, the, the planning and zoning, they told him to move that bus there. So it's more of an eyesore for us. But, you know, like I said, we're the ones that we have to live by. We have to look at it. But no one seems to be interested in the fact that there are seven homes along Pomocky Lane. There's not just the church. There's not just Penny's house. There are seven homes along that lane. And every other person on there has signed that we do not want this amended. So I don't understand why, you know, you won't at least consider checking into this some more, especially with the complaints that were done. In order to get Mr. Hoffman in compliance, we had to continue to complain and complain and complain. And we shouldn't have had to do that. When that, when that SUP was given to him, someone should have been checking to make sure that he was in the guidelines of that SUP. No one did that. We had to do the complaining. You know, we got kind of tired of complaining about it. And a lot of times they go out, they don't find anything wrong. Sometimes they find something wrong. It's hard to believe. When we would sit there and take account of how many cars were there, but they never found a violation. I mean, you're gonna spray paint a tree so that the, the neighbors don't see that it's dead? Really? You're gonna take green spray paint and paint it? I mean, I, I just don't understand. A, a professional businessperson, I don't think, would conduct themselves like that. But, you know, again, we had to complain on that, you know? We had to complain to get the trees that are there now that are planted in the inappropriate place. That is not where planning and zoning told him to plant those Leyland Cypress that he planted. He did, they did not tell him to plant them there. They told him to plant them behind the other row of trees that was there. He did not do that. He's planted them in a right of way that he shouldn't have planted them in. And they do, those trees, according to his diagram and everything, they come up and they meet? No, they don't. I don't know if, if y'all went down there and looked at it, but, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that's wrong here. And all we ask is that you consider our feelings and what we have to look at and what we have to live aside. That's all we're asking. Is that you take into consideration our feelings. And as far as Pomocky Lane goes, we've been there for over fifty-some years. It's always been a private driveway. We've never had any problems with the church. We know what time they're having church. We know to, to look out for the cars when they're coming in and out. But with the customers running in there all hours of the day and the night, I've almost been hit up quite a few times up in that curve because they come in there at a high rate of speed and they don't understand and they don't realize that there's other people that live on Pomocky Lane besides just Mr. Hoffman. There's other people living there. I mean, and it's, and it's, and it's bad when you, you leave your, your house or your residence and, and you have to fear for your life to, to get out the driveway. There, there's, that's not right. We shouldn't have to go through this. And according to, um, what I looked up, you're supposed to allow for small-scale businesses. I believe Mr. Hoffman is already small-scale. And if you allow him to do what he's asking you to do, he's no longer small. He now becomes large. And according to your own categories here, I mean, it states small-scale commercial uses is part of the special use. That's what y'all allow. To, to do this amendment, he's not small anymore.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is William Weaver.
Good evening. My name is William Weaver. Uh, I've made a lot of complaints of, uh, Randy's auto. Wasn't really aware of them until I got a copy of the SUP. And as like my sister was saying, it's a lot been going on. Unfortunately, you guys haven't been getting the right information from the planning and zoning. There's been so much stuff going on there, uh, like the signage. Ms. Kendall used to be the one I had to do the complaining with and she actually warned Mr. Hoffman about the signage not being over. And she just rode by it along with the other inspectors for years. And it was already over the limit. According to state code, once these ordinances are put in place, you guys have to enforce them. And all I've asked out of planning and zoning is to get it right. The original SUP never was right from the beginning. He went past his time to get the trees and stuff planted and the only way he could have got a contingency was by writing. Come to find out, the letter never existed. I requested it. Ms. Kendall said it was by phone call. It was not. Ms. Kendall allowed Mr. Hoffman to plant, to, uh, park cars in the private part of the, uh, shop area down there to stage it, I believe she said. She didn't even have the authority to do that. Using the private part. It's clearly marked on the SUP, private. He was working out of the private part too. So he puts anywhere three to five cars around there all day long. Over the weekend, he's always putting customer cars there. Uh, when he gone, when they do do inspections, he'll say, there's this most recent one, I believe it's over twenty-seven cars there, but ten of them was only there for service. The rest belonged to relatives? I don't think so. But what I have here is what the county took many, many pictures over the years. What I have is tag numbers on those cars. And Mr. Hoffman has perjured himself before. He's perjured himself in this amendment and statements he's made. Uh, I certainly hope this don't have to go any further than here tonight and, uh, deny this amendment because I'm fully prepared to go to court and subpoena every tag number owner of these cars and we'll find out who the owners are. They're not relatives. He's lied to the planning and zoning and to the inspectors and to you guys. And, you know, appreciate you for taking time to listen to it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Next speaker is Adam Bryanton, one two, one six, zero, Berrywood Lane.
Good evening. Adam Bryanton, um, I'm owner and operator of Edward Store and Ed Coato Parts down in Rhodesville, Virginia. Um, Mr. Hoffman's been a customer of mine for many, many years. I remember when he first built a shop there and started his business there and everything was happy-go-lucky. Things have changed a little bit since then, but he sure is a good man. He's been a good business owner. He's, keeps his business in the county. Does a lot of business with my business. Um, I go to Randy's shop quite a bit. If you've never been there, you're in for a treat because you could probably go sit and eat on the floor in his shop. It's a well-maintained shop. He's one of the most meticulous mechanics I know. Um, everything is kept clean. Everything's kept in front of the shop as far as I can tell. I've never been around the backside of the shop. It's always nice and paved and pretty over there. Um, a lot of cars moving in and out of the shop. I can see them when stacked up in there at times when I'm waiting on parts for me to deliver them. I highly recommend- I highly recommend you guys give Mr. Hoffman enough leeway so he doesn't have to worry about that twenty-six car constantly. Um, but I just think he runs a very good business and I don't think you should handcuff him in a way that he can't continue to do his business and, and continue to service the customers that come to him on a regular basis for service because he gives such good service to them. I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
And the last speaker currently signed up is Penny Lawfer, one-five-one-nine-two, Pumonkey Lane.
Hello, I'd like to thank y'all for your time, my name is Penny Lawfer. I live directly across from Mr. Hoffman. Um, Mr., Mr. Hoffman, in my view, is an ideal businessman. His shop is immaculate, his work is very thorough and accurate. I've had him work on my vehicles, I've referred him to family and friends, and everyone is pleased with the accuracy, cost, and return time of their vehicles. He has been able to diagnose stuff that a dealership has not been able to diagnose. Mr. Hoffman is a very particular and clean person. You do not see his shop or lot filled with oil or fluid spots. He does not like clutter. He's not interested in starting a junkyard. Myself, having been in the auto restoration field before, I understand there are a lot of different circumstances that can keep a vehicle longer than expected. You have people that are dropping their cars off, going on vacation, people that are waiting for parts. There's a lot of circumstances. Income, if you can't pay for your vehicle due to the parts that were needed, is he supposed to relinquish it and then have to go back after it later if they never pay for it? Um, I feel like keeping the lot at a maximum of twenty-five is a shame. It could hinder good people from getting a good reliable service, and more so, that is a punishment to the community. He also has a contract with the sheriff's department to impound vehicles. That will hold a couple lot, couple spaces too. If you're impounding a vehicle because somebody doesn't have a driver's license and they go to jail because they're an illegal person to the state, you don't know when they're getting out. You don't know when they're getting their vehicle back. The landscaping of the home and business, my personal opinion, is kept nicely, the grass stays cut, bushes and trees stay trimmed. I've never seen Mr. Hoffman out there painting any trees, but I do have my own chores to do at the same time. Um, I've also been out there helping him do his yard work and I've not gotten any paint off of any trees. The Leland Cypress's that act as a site barrier, they do not protrude into the right-of-way that goes down Pumonkey Lane that I myself have to drive down. They're used to block someone's view, not obstructing the road to anyone's house, blocking the view from Pumonkey Lane to his lot. And honestly, they've grown quite nicely. He is aware of how big they can get, he does keep them trimmed back. But they are a view barrier and really the only way you can actually count cars is if you're going two miles an hour. There's not many people that go down Pumonkey Lane at two miles an hour. My child and my dog have almost been hit from visitors coming down. Not visitors into Randy Hoffman's shop, visitors, visiting people that live down the road. And my children and my dog have almost been hit because nobody travels the fifteen miles an hour that Mr. Hoffman has posted. Um, once I get a few more things cleared on my property, I plan to replicate the trees on his property as far as the Leland Cypress's. The hours of operation on this business are usually from eight to five. I'm the direct neighbor. The noise is not a disturbance to me, matter of fact, there is hardly any noise. The most you hear is the air compressor kicking on to build compression. Mr. Hoffman is a very conscious person who does not to, just wish to disturb anybody. I moved there in March of two thousand and twelve and he has asked me on several occasions when I first moved in if anything was bothersome, and the answer has always been no. During school hours, my children catch the bus from six forty to seven oh five in the morning. Yes, Mr. Hoffman is outside his shop, to which the girl has a good day at school, to move vehicles around for priority, turn the lights on and the heat on if needed for his employees, or open the bay doors for air circulation for comfort to start the day for his employees. I'm getting back to my house by seven-ten and usually he's returning back to his house to wait until about eight o'clock when his employees start to show up. Um, as I say, I am the direct neighbor to Mr. Hoffman. So of all neighbors, I feel like I would be more of what know, more of what goes on, I would know more of what goes on there than anyone else that goes down Pumonkey Lane because they're not sitting camping out and checking out anything. From my observation, it seems that the only disputes to Mr. Hoffman's expanding his business are coming from ex-family members that he was married into. There's a lot of grade school resentment, it seems. For instance, at nine PM, twenty-six hours after the last board meeting regarding this same exact situation, um, there was buckets of track, of animal feces. Moves up to a little piece of land. Um, section of property that is owned by some neighbors. I guess they were in resentment of things being approved by the board. There was also multiple no trespassing signs, "That's at your wish." I guess the eyesore from the veh, um, vehicles was a little too much, so they decided to put their own eyesore there. Um, I just think that it would be a hinder to not allow Mr. Hoffman to share his exceptional services to the community. Um, with his expansion, I'm sure it would cause for employment expansion, which it seems like that's what the county needs at this point. Um, and he just offers a very great service to everyone in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. Public hearing. Discussion. Hearing on motion?
Have a motion and then have our discussion if you want.
You, which motion?
Uh, I, I move to approve the SUP, but I have a second motion that deals with conditions.
Let me second your, let me second your first one. So we have a motion as second, but you have a?
I, I have a motion, the, uh, in, in visiting the property several times and talking to several of the people in the, in the audience tonight and looking at the work that the, uh, planning commission did and staff did, uh, the, I believe I have a feel for the, the intent of the conditions that were, uh, being imposed. And, uh, I'm, I would like to offer up a, a set that I think are, uh, in the spirit of what the planning commission and the staff were trying to accomplish, that narrows the, uh, the scope of activities a little bit and addresses really the two areas that I think are, are the most critical from the standpoint of, uh, of, of this SUP. Those two areas deal with the, the vehicles that are there and where they should be and the like, and what kind of vehicle can be there. And then the second one deals with screening. Uh, I, there are really two areas that need to be screened. Uh, the, the property line that essentially follows Pumonkey Lane, uh, or an easement that, along Pumonkey Lane, and then adjoining property line, uh, that, uh, where, where the, the previous conditions didn't specifically address that buffering. And so, uh, I'm proposing that there be four, uh, conditions. Uh, one dealing with parking of vehicles that are there for compensatory service, one dealing with using the definition of public garage and limiting the automob, automotive graveyard, uh, or invoking the automotive graveyard ordinance as part of this, these conditions. Uh, and a third that deals with the screening on Pumonkey, and a fourth that deals with the, the natural buffering and screening along, uh, what amounts to tax parcel sixty-fifty-seven? It's another owner, it would be the, the easternmost property line. And, uh, so I'd like to, you, you all have copies of these. Uh, uh, and...
So for clarity, you're, you're recommending replacing this new set of performance standards with the current performance standards that are in the?
That's correct.
Staff conditions.
That's, that's correct. I, I believe I've picked up all of the, the elements that the staff was trying to accomplish, both staff and planning commission were trying to accomplish. Uh, one of the things that I found in my, in my discussions and, and visit and looking at, at the file on this is that there, there was, uh, enough ambiguity in, in some of the previous conditions uh, that, uh, raised concerns and, and, uh, left room for interpretation. I, I think these conditions sort of tighten that down, focus on the, on the two things that are, that are most critical. And so, my, my motion would be that we, uh, use the four standards that, uh, that I've given you here tonight uh, as the, uh, as the conditions. Uh, and they would be the conditions for approving the SUP. So I make a motion that we adopt these four conditions.
Hold on a second. Okay. We have a motion.
We should, we should read them?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Read them to the record first.
I'll, I'll be happy to read them if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Uh, and, and this, this replaces in the, uh, what in the, uh, in the file is, is item four, performance standards A through C. Would now read, "Performance standards," and performance standard number one would read, uh, as follows. "All the vehicles stored on-site for compensatory service shall be parked on or north of the existing sixty-foot asphalt private parking area as illustrated on the April twenty-nine, two thousand and fourteen site plan." That's to say, just for, for clarification, that according, using your site, the site plan you filed from the, the point of that asphalt, that existing sixty-foot asphalt surface, uh, northward, to include inside the garage as well as behind the garage. You're, you're able to use that for parking vehicles that are there for service. It all, it goes on to say, "A fenced impoundment area no greater than twenty-five hundred feet in area may be maintained within the boundaries." So the impoundment area, which I guess is roughly the size of the one that's there now, uh, is, is also continued to be part of it. That deals with vehicle parking. Standard number two, "The business must operate within the definition of public garage as defined in section seventy-one of the Orange County zoning ordinance, and must also comply with the definition of automobile graveyard whereby no more than five inoperable and unlicensed motor vehicles are stored for an indefinite period of time." So you'd be limited to the overriding ordinance provision of not operating an automobile graveyard, but operating only a public garage. Number three, "Screening as provided by the existing lines of trees and the thirty-foot wide grass area buffer along the property line that follows Pumonkey Lane, as represented again in your site plan, shall be preserved and maintained. In any case of expansion of this special use, any new buildings, anything you do, the applicant must submit, submit an as-built site plan that accurately reflects the landscaping, the location of the building, and the parking area." So if you, if you make changes, which this would allow you to do, then you come back and reapply and resubmit an as-built plan. And number four, "The applicant shall, uh, shall preserve the existing eighteen-foot-wide natural buffer that exists adjacent to tax map parcel sixty-fifty-seven." Uh, that's been added to, uh, to locate the, this proposed storage building that you're talking about, or the truck port off of the property line. Uh, the, the county ordinance requires ten feet, we're asking for eighteen. Uh, you, you, uh, proposed eighteen in your site plan, and so we're saying, we're making that a requirement now, that it be eighteen and that you preserve that, that natural buffer. It's sort of a mix of trees and, and shrubs and the like, uh, that are there now. Uh, and that you're required to preserve that. Those are the four conditions. I have a copy if you'd like to come and, and get it and take a quick look at it.
Mr. Weaver, a quick question for you. That does not affect the actual customer parking on the south side of the building, is that correct? The handicap parking for when customers are physically there?
No, no, that, that's a different matter. The, the, these are, these are, according to number one, all vehicles stored.
Right. Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that one's clear.
Does not, does not affect your handicap, uh, parking spots. Or when customers are actually waiting for, uh, for service. They're physically there, right. So that's my motion.
Okay. So, so the first vote would be simple whether to replace the existing three conditions with these new four ones?
So with that, we have a motion as second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Uh, with that then, we move on to the approval of the SUP, we have a motion in a second. Excuse me, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. With that, we move back to action item seven C. Uh, wait a minute, nope, did we move that? Seven D, that would be the priorities. Yes, to the financial policies, we move to discussion.
Right.
So, uh, yes, item seven D, draft two thousand and fourteen, sixteen, board of supervisors priorities.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, as you know, you set out a, a work program for the next two years at your retreat back in, in April. And, uh, I was scheduled to come back to tonight's meeting with, um, taking those, uh, those elements and then, uh, kind of setting a path forward of, of when and, and what we're going to do to address those, uh, those priorities. And I think I've gone through and itemized, either we're well underway with a lot of them or, uh, there are things that need to be taken care of first before we actually start, uh, another priority. So, you know, if, if I've been responsive, that's my attempt to kind of show you, uh, at least from my perspective, I'm pretty well comfortable with priorities and, and the efforts that we have in the way, but I'll, I'll look for your guidance.
Couple of my, I had a question about, about the, uh, the dates. You know, number two, for example, to start that in quarter three, uh, that's one maybe we, we should probably key to the adoption of the, the small area plan because obviously until that's done, uh, that one's gonna be difficult. So that, as long as these are soft dates, I, I'm okay.
In, in fact, I, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
No, it's all right, it just says, "After the adoption of the G WAP."
Yeah, right.
Um, yeah, these are all just putting down a date, either with some, some science or at least some feel. Yeah, they're soft dates. I, I, I plan to periodically come back to you on status. I, I, I don't need a formal objection, I'll just take this as a sensitive void that this is, uh, I've appropriately incorporated a work program with some target dates and tasks and such.
Yeah, uh, I got what you said. A couple of notes here. I think this probably relates more to the financial when we were talking about the five-year capital improvement program. So I'll, I'll hold off on it until we get to a discussion on that. Oh, and the, okay. You, you can keep it, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've just, see if you got, I thought you had a comment, so. No, this is fine. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, good. Well, I'll, I'll keep working this and, and periodically report on it.
I guess my, I, the only question I, I really have is, this is an awful lot.
Yeah, that's, that's why you took me to the dates, I mean, oh, man.
Yeah, I'm looking, uh, and, uh, in terms of you and your staff, uh, they're putting in, uh, a lot of overtime or something? Oh, they're, they're all, uh, they're all there.
They're all smiling, right?
I mean, I just think this is an awful lot. I, I, I don't, uh, since you're the guy setting your own, uh, your own milestones there.
May, maybe the next thing for you to think about is, is pick out sort of an, an ordering of when, you know, either prioritization or whatever, because we probably can't attack this, you know, in a frontal attack. We need to, we just pick it apart and...
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the... Yeah, I mean, if you look at the, there are not very many quarters that are sticking out very far away.
Well, again, uh, you all set these as your priorities and I was trying to be responsive to, to it, but.
And they might not all fit within a fiscal year or, or a single year time. I mean, some of these are, we know are going to
Take a while.
Take a while, yeah.
If, if you remember, just a couple of years ago, I asked the planning commission for the comp plan and zoning plan and the subdivision by the end of the year, they went, yep.
Yep, they won't do that now, I bet.
Well, they don't have Brian. Brian on, on Greg's tail and Greg on the whip.
Some of this will be central, some of them will be unforeseen delays and things, but I, at this point, as far as some of these are, some of these are like global things like the broadband, uh, doing the area plan, that's a pretty short-term kind of thing. So, uh, at this point, I'm comfortable now whether we get closure on these in two years, I think that may be the more operative thing, I think. I think as far as what we are to be working on among our day-to-day work in a strategic sense, I'm comfortable.
And some are key to other events, like, like the broad, the, uh, the wireless data service and, and so forth with the sheriff's office and the nine-one-one, that's a bigger project somehow needs to, that will drive the schedule.
So with that understanding, there is, this is a living flexible document, I hope.
Very athletic document.
Okay, so we need no actual action?
No, sir, I've had, I have my draft.
Okay. Uh, move on to seven E, resolution to receive the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services fiscal year two thousand fifteen performance contract, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
For zero.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Kurt, we took care of that because wanted, you could go home if you wanted to, we were trying to do.
Well, you, you saw a couple of things on here that.
Oh, okay, okay.
You do? Well, I, I tried.
It was, it was the chairman's prerogative to me this time.
The good news is, I've whittled them, dealt this contract about seven thousand dollars, so it's going in the right direction.
Good, good.
Is that the EAP financing?
There's a seven thousand.
All right, move on to action item seven F, that would be our start time, which we discussed last time, moving it to four, uh, uniformly across the board. I understand there's some concerns that maybe we should move it to five.
My only thing, like, tonight when we had a seven o'clock public hearing, if we, if, I, I agree with being consistent, and it seems to me that we should at least consider doing, doing them all at five instead of four, because otherwise, unlike tonight, we could be here with a short agenda and be twiddling our thumbs for a couple hours.
The other thing too is there's a lot of citizens that prefer the five o'clock meeting time because they can make it, whereas they cannot make it to four o'clock.
Well, I, I, I find, I just, I just want a consistency so that it was.
I, I don't have any problems either way.
Yeah, I, I really don't either, other than, I just, my fault was.
I sort of like getting out early, but, uh,
We got quite a few public hearings coming up, though, I think, it's, uh.
Well, the difference between four and five is several amounts of things, but it's the, the other concern I had too with staff, the later meetings, we keep them out too.
Yeah.
Well, I, we, we, we went out and asked for those jobs.
They didn't.
Well, but, but.
They got volunteered for.
We, you know, we have compensa, I mean, we, it all comes out.
I, I understand it, but we, we all have.
That still means they're away from home, but.
Yeah, we all have a life somewhere besides here.
Well, one of the options would be too to think about picking the first meeting of the month as the public hearing, instead of kind of doing them whenever, haphazardly, whenever we need one, just saying, okay, the first meeting of the month, all our public hearings are gonna be then. That tends to be the meeting with the longer agenda the, anyway. And so just say, okay, all public hearings except for emergency hearings are gonna be scheduled into that first, that first meeting of the month, because that, you almost always need to start it for.
That sometimes so means you end up having to delay a, a public hearing, you know, a lot longer, and the citizen has to wait that much longer before he, uh, before he gets his.
But, but some of those things we can schedule, because you know, like, planning commission things, you know they're coming. So you could theoretically schedule those even before they left the planning commission, so I'm just.
I just, I just not wanna find ourselves delaying, uh, uh, public hearings, uh.
We, we have actually pre-done things before.
I know, and, and that's fine, as long as, as long as we're, as long as we're trying to keep those things as.
About four thirty. Yeah, I, it, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference, it's just looking at the few things and the, the one, the one thing that I have heard consistently for years is that citizens prefer the five o'clock to the four o'clock.
Or even, I've heard some say six.
Well, I, I was going to say, I, I wasn't gonna keep pushing it farther and farther back, but, uh, that is the one thing that I have heard consistently for years. Doesn't, personally, I, makes no difference.
Well, it's only, what, eight meetings, August, September, October, and then a couple. So, uh, try one, one of the other. Five suits me slightly better personally, but my real issue is just if we have some short agendas and we have a public hearing, that's a, uh, that seems to be a misuse of not only our time but staff's time.
Well, and, and.
I mean, from staff's point of view, uh, we're gonna be, they're gonna be here until after the public hearings, or after the public hearings anyway. So whether we start at five or four, you know, they're, they're, they're here either way. Uh, if we don't have a public hearing, we're out here a lot earlier at four. May not even need to feed us.
Yeah, I, I would.
We could save money.
Save money and time and everything else.
There's that seven thousand dollars.
It's growing.
Taking it out of the, out of our eye.
There's a lot of people like that.
Well, I will look for a motion to one or the other, but.
I'm moved that we do it at four o'clock.
Just the uniform time, that's all I ask. So I have a motion for four. Do I have a second?
I have a slight preference for five, so I'm.
So you're not gonna support?
So I'm not gonna support it.
Okay.
We gotta disagree on one thing tonight.
I thi, I think we're gonna tie it this one, so how about somebody make a motion for five?
Make a motion, we move our meetings to five P M.
So let the record show, my motion died for lack of a second.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, all meetings now will be at five o'clock.
For the rest of you.
For the rest, right, yes.
Okay, uh, item seven G, VDOT request. What you had given us.
Yes, you all should have a copy of this. Uh, it came from a gentleman, uh, Mr. Jerry Garrett Johnny, I believe is how you pronounce his name. Uh, he lives on Mine Run Road and brings up some very valid, uh, concerns that I experience every day going by, uh, his house and on six twenty-one. Uh, I'd like to, uh, ask that we move this forward to VDOT. The only one thing I don't think we're going to be able to, uh, to accomplish is restricting the heavy truck traffic. Six twenty-one is the only, it, it is a primary road from Route Three, uh, as well as from six oh six and six oh eight in Spotsylvania County. Yeah, I'd love to not see trucks on most of our roads, but I, I, I would just suggest that we not include that in our request to VDOT. I think we'd be much.
So we need a resolution to, uh, to ask VDOT to do a speed study?
Well, a speed study as well as, um, the redesignating the passing zone, uh, to a no passing zone in the sections of six twenty-one between Grasty Gold Mine and Route Twenty.
Can we stick all that in a resolution?
The, the two, the, do a speed study and then also the, uh, uh,
The, the no passing zone?
No passing zones.
Right, because the enforcement from the sheriff's office, uh, Mark has no problem doing that with anything in the county, so.
So what do we do, do we just, uh, wanna draft a, draft a resolution for the next meeting?
That would be wonderful, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, very good.
We'll, we'll bring it back, uh, on the twelfth.
Okay.
Not our fleshful meeting, but on the twelfth, our next regular meeting.
All right. Uh, with that then, we move on to.
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna deal with, uh, the Spectra Pipeline issues under an action item?
Yes, that's right, that's right. I would make a motion that we, uh, task the, uh, the county administrator to draft a letter for the, uh, chairman's signature requesting that, uh, Spectra Pipeline, uh, come to, uh, Orange County and have hold a public meeting to explain their, uh, their project and, uh, and respond to, uh, citizens' questions. Okay.
Second. If that's a motion, that's the motion.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to add concerns to, to your motion, questions and concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
As they've articulated either here tonight or in writing to.
That's right, that's, so we have those, uh, and ask that the, the, the concerns that have already been expressed, uh, ask the, give, uh, ask Spectra a advance notice of those are the issues that would, uh, that like, would like them to address.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees? Uh, have we found someone to do something?
I have, uh, somebody to do, uh, District Five's, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, Serge S E R G E Ogranovich, did he get hold of you, uh, Allison?
No, sir.
Is that, okay, I've got his phone number and address, I don't have his email, I will get back to you with that. Uh, I'll, I'll give you that information, but that's what I'd like to nominate or have nominate for, uh, for court approval.
Then, um, I have one for the planning commission. J P Tucker is no longer able to serve on the planning commission, uh, due to his schedule and other commitments. And I was fortunate enough to contact, uh, Mr. Crystal Hale. She's a lifelong resident of the county and has, uh, she worked for VDOT for a number of years and, uh, is extremely interested in working on the commission, so I'd like to, uh, nominate her for appointment to the planning commission. And Allison already has all of her information.
Has Mr. Tucker formally officially resigned?
He will be forwarding a letter, I, um, and if we need to do it pursuant to, pursuant to his letter.
Yeah, because it'd have to be subject to his resignation.
Okay, um, well, subject to his official notification of his resignation, I would like to nominate her, uh, for this position.
Okay. Yeah, me neither.
I got a couple of tough ones.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, discussion items, changes to ordinance regarding requests for landfill waivers.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of board, as you recall back at your, uh, June twenty-fourth meeting, uh, stream sweepers, a group cleaning up stream banks came and, uh, requested a waiver, and you, uh, approved it. At the time, I, uh, shared that there seems to sometimes be, that was done as a late item, uh, at that night's agenda, because at the time that they come in, either they're a recurring, uh, group or whatever, they, they show up and we really try to accommodate them, but then there's, seems to be sometimes a delay and, and, and I don't personally recall whether the event happens before the first board meeting we get to, I could maybe see a certain. And so what I'm proposing to do is to, to, to delegate that authority of waiving those fees, because it appears to be pretty routine and customary, you set up a charge account that you credit against, so, you know, these aren't ones that you, you typically would deny, um, and that, uh, I would only be authorized to waive it for eligible entities, and, and again, nonprofit corporations, faith-based organizations, community service organizations or groups and the like, and, uh, that I need to account for them, and I need to, um, uh, then give you all per- periodic reports of activity as well as, as the cost. Uh, I offer this up as an efficiency thing, it, it just maybe can move some of these things along a more, more responsibly.
The only thing I would ask is that we know, when you do it, so that when people go, I don't see it on the agenda, we can go, it's already done.
Yes, sir, I mean, it, it, as, you know, probably the frequency is so, not so great, is that I will let you all know, um, by email or, or some, some acknowledgement of, I've just done this for this group or for these dates.
Well, I mean, it's typically, it's the Orange County Fair, the Fireman's Fair, the Street Festival in Orange and Gordonsville, the Somerset Gas and Steam, and a couple other things, and that's kinda it. Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with this, I mean.
Should we, uh, should we have a vote on this, uh, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Well, this is just discussion, it's got to be an ordinance amendment.
Oh, they can't, uh.
Well, I mean, the, the, the ordinance, well, I thought that's how you had proposed it, because the ordinance says that it's by the authority of the board of supervisors.
I was just asking for them to delegate the authority, if you wanted ordinance amendment, we can do that. You more comfortable that way, we didn't, I'm sorry, we didn't do our back.
I, I guess I misunderstood what we were doing.
Okay, we can do an ordinance amendment. Say the board, it, it just authorize, the board may, may authorize the county administration.
But if we do an ordinance amendment, we have to have a public hearing?
Well, yeah, I, the ordinance says that it's by, tipping phase will be waived by the authority of the board of supervisors. I, I think if we have, I guess if we have a written or if we have a resolution that's adopted, it, it, if it's actually a formal resolution, I would feel comfortable that we're okay.
Okay, we'll come back with a resolution.
Yeah, if we have a resolution.
I apologize for being.
Yeah, my, that's my fault, I misunderstood.
Alternatively, on, on August twenty-sixth, we have a public hearing, we're, we're proposing to schedule a public hearing to deal with the planning commission liaison position, we could, I mean, if it's cleaner or you feel more comfortable doing the public hearing, we can.
I, I, I like the idea of a resolution.
Well, I, I prefer that.
Well, yeah, I, I think if we have a resolution and a formal vote on a resolution delegating, then I think we're okay.
That's, I would prefer.
Something more than a motion, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I apologize, I misunderstood.
Yeah, we didn't sync up on this, so.
All right, that's easy enough.
All right, so we'll come back with a, a resolution to authorize me to, to do this, uh, this work.
And, okay, then we move to nine B, proposed schedule for development adoption of capital improvements plan.
Yes, sir, this is, and I'm, given the hour of the night, I can go through this, uh, but let me just kind of hit the, the, the high points. Uh, when I was working with, with Director of Finance in this year's budget process, one of the things that became pretty quickly apparent was the, the five-year C I P, the capital budget and the operating budget. Uh, my, my practice in the past is that there are really three different types of financial documents. The C I P is a planning tool, it doesn't commit to appropriating money, but it gives the plans. It's, it's how we're going to, um, budget for the facilities to implement the programs, policies. Then that first year of this five-year C I P is really the template for the capital budget. But the capital budget's gotta go through a rigorous fin- finance, financeability, uh, which is more, uh, more detailed and available funds. If, if, if your, if your funds are not there for that first year, then those projects, you, you may run out. And those projects that don't get funded then would roll over to the succeeding year one, uh, uh, of this. And you kind of keep doing this so that your C I P is done by October, so that when you start your operating capital budget, uh, work, you already have that document there. Um, I, I'm comfortable with this, the, the only other element to this, um, in, in the finance directive, Linda's comfortable with this process, was Dr. Grimacy and I agreed in principle at a staff level, we understand we can't commit our boards to anything, of incorporating the school C I P as one, so that if you opened up, into the county's C I P, so that if you opened up this document, you would see all of the capital projects. And he was comfortable with that, and we were comfortable, but we hadn't gone to our respective boards to, to see if they were comfortable with that approach. Uh, with that, so I, I bring this all to you and proceed, prepare to move forward with this calendar if you all are okay with, with what I'm proposing.
I do have one question. For a capital project to be eligible for inclusion in the annual budget, in the annual capital budget, it must first fear in the adopted five-year plan and identified as ready for implementation in year one.
Does that mean that all of them, all five years need to be ready for, or am I just reading that wrong?
No, yeah, maybe not. It's year one, they it had, in order to get from year one into the budget, it's got to be ready to go.
Okay, all right. So it isn't anything in the five-year plan has to be ready for year one, okay.
I've had situations where it was in year one, we make that into the capital budget, but because of some intervening event, property was not being able to be acquired. Something in the design came up that was just that changed the whole complexion of it, then it just would would drop out.
Which means in some cases you need to have the some of the engineering work done in a previous capital item before you're ready to put that into a into your first year.
Yes, sir. What what you may do with a large, um let's let's take a project as the radio system or the nine-one-one center, you would fund uh preliminary engineering and cost estimates as as a first step with the actual construction being maybe three years out.
Okay, all right.
They got it on film, so don't uh.
I I had a cramp in my leg, so I had to get up anyway.
So if everybody on the board is comfortable with this schedule, we'll proceed. Yeah, I mean, it's it's tight, I mean, you're you're making the call out to project managers on the eighth and starting meetings on the five days later, so. Well, this is.
Or are they already working?
Well, a lot of this work, I I I still say that the CIP template, the process here is is one of the best I've seen. Um and so I I what we've done is just kind of move up the process a little earlier, uh so I I've been selling this as you get get this done earlier, you don't have to worry about it down down the road. And and also I think it fits with you all having a joint meeting with the school board because you can talk about capital projects, the Route Three initiative and and a few other things. All right. I think the next one is.
Next one would be the GIS project implementation schedule.
Hold on, I gotta sit and take a break.
He wants money, he's asking for money, this.
Well, I'm asking for y'all's uh consideration of this item, this is as a result of the July eighth meeting, uh where Josh presented some information about the GIS sort of demonstrated some of the elements of this. Um and we discussed this afterwards about what we would need to address some of the concerns. And I came up with uh three issues and then potential solutions. So very briefly, uh three items are insufficient staffing at the current time. Second would be new computing hardware and software and dedicated network server needed at some future point in time, you know, ten years down the road, once we grow significantly. And lastly, creating mapping data format, which is used by both E nine-one-one and the Sheriff's Dispatch. Because right now they're incompatible with the ESRI uh format, so there's that data conversion element as well, because we have to get coordinated with our formatting. And uh the I put together a little chronology in the back, as if you can remember, I think Tia Lee, um we had discussed this about two years ago, three years ago. And we'd laid out a map on how we wanted to do it, and that's one of the reasons we now have a senior planner as opposed to a planner report, because I wanted somebody who had GIS experience to help us get this moving. And Josh Fittabilli's done quite well with that. But at some point with with growing applications, he can't, he cannot do that by himself. And we we will have to move toward a GIS coordinator to have a sustainable uh long-term solution.
Do you have a feel for what we're spending on with IMSA and other GIS related expenses on an annual basis?
I don't have the data in front of me, um I can certainly provide that to the board, um give you an estimate, you know, to give you an estimate on parcel data updates and stuff.
This is this is not all new money, it's some, there are some offsets, and I I think if I remember, it's some fairly significant offsets.
Yes, sir, and what what this would eventually do is move us, you know, since we're migrating away from IMSA altogether, we will see that reduction in our budget lines. And that I think that might be one of the offsets you're talking about, Jim.
I I guess the other thing, the other question I had is one of, call it timing, phasing, whatever, I mean, you know, not all of this can or needs to happen immediately, so I'd like to see a little bit of a of a schedule discussion or plan of act, yeah, whatever, and just sort of.
Plan of action.
You know, when would we do what, when would we spend what, and sort of what are the offsets compared to what we're doing today?
What are we actually adding or?
And and, yeah, that's right.
What are you getting for your money for the tax drivers going to pay?
Okay.
Well, no, I, my mine was more, what is the increase in cost?
Right.
If there is any.
Either increasing or consolidation of costs is one of my concerns, is more consolidation, and I I'll be very upfront with you. I personally don't believe that the GIS system should be done by any department that is doing other functions. They should be their own entity, even if it's a one-person entity, that way they are not absorbed or biased by their their operations versus other department operations, and that's just, that that is just my opinion.
Well, to 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 build on that, I if if our ultimate goal is to have a GIS that serves the entire county function, including first responders, E nine-one, planning zoning, you know, commissioner of revenue, whomever, uh then I think another part of this is an organizational discussion where it might start in your office or your operation and so forth, but it the plan over time would be to migrate it to something else as it as it grows in in capability and 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 clients, if you will.
Right, so. And that's one thing we can address, because when you consider something like that, you also have to consider the costs associated with adding that uh new network component. That's why I kind of prefer it in-house, but I I hear what you're saying, Mr. President, and I respect that and.
Regardless of any of the departments, I mean, I I have fairly extensive experience in the old-style GIS. Before the computers, you did everything and you did manual layers uh for everything, and when it was done by one particular department rather than a, at that time they were called mapping departments, it became biased, it truly did, and that department was the recipient of all the the fruits of the labor, whereas if it is a mapping or in this case a GIS department, their their goal is to truly bring everybody together without influencing it one way or another. And uh it's, like I said, I it's very important to me and uh I just I truly believe that we need to work towards an independent department, not necessarily raising our costs, but uh and that's easier said than done, I realize that, but um I I would like to see that long term.
Okay, so.
I'm just providing all this information.
Why why don't we do this, is maybe come up with what we would, and and may not turn it around for the next board meeting, but when we is come up with what we would consider a budget proposal, showing the the nets, the offsets, and how we would actually structure this function with kind of a short, in 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 a near-term and a long-term phase where you know, part of this also argues, you know, it it's a hybrid between this geographic piece, then there is a an IT piece.
Absolutely.
And 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 how uh and maybe looking at some other similarly situated localities of how they treat GIS or what was their path forward. And we'll bring that back as kind of a a a propose, a a proxy of a budget proposal, so that when we get into the budget cycle, we may be able to see how we might be able to to advance. And and maybe at least some preliminary discussions with the some of the key user organizations, fire, rescue, sheriff, E nine-one-one and the like to to see, you know, to at least start the dialogue about sort of having a single master database that we all use for our purposes.
What you actually have is one of your objectives, realignment of consolidation of functions.
Yeah.
And it's one of them, and it would seem to me that that should be consistent with that particular uh priority.
What's the date on that link? That sounds good. As a good county administrator would say, uh of course. So we'll we'll come up.
I I I'm I'm.
He's on vacation.
The the functioning I, I'll listen to, but I'd really like to see what you've got in terms of what we're paying now, what would the new costs would be, and uh and uh what the what the plan of action for how you would implement all of the elements of this.
We can do that.
Yeah, we'll we'll come up with kind of a budget.
I mean, there's that one piece of property owned by Lake of the Woods that has a, by the GIS shows a pipe stem near Picky's Lane, shows a pipe stem out to uh uh six oh one that does not exist.
You've heard about that one?
I've heard about that multiple times, but it's still showing up on GIS after about seven or eight years when people have complained about it. The property now owns, belongs to Phil Akincaid, and he always tells me about that misalignment of G G uh GIS.
Where you where you go across the street where the twenty-six acres of commercial land that is really twenty-six acres. But someone's paid tax on it for itself.
Anyway, so, and have you got that other problem fixed yet, Josh?
Working on it.
I tried to get in there and use some of the tools, and there's a little thing that flies up in front of it, you can't get at the tools.
I used it the other day, I I was doing a very limited thing and I was successful, it took me a little while to recognize the difference, but it worked.
Well, yeah, I was trying to measure some distances and and the tool to do that is covered by the thing that's does the uh what's what the lock do you want to look at? But it's it's uh but you can get right to it in terms of getting to the uh the uh what the assess assessments are and all the description of the property, that's that's good.
I do want to thank y'all, because when I first came here, that's one of the first issues I noticed of the efficiency of that, and I'm grateful that y'all have even, you know, you funded this, you created a CIP line item for this and.
Just took you a long time to convince us that.
Hey, you know, y'all did it, I'm grateful.
Wheels of government move slow.
But but we're moving and not over the moon.
We'll come, we'll come back with a budget proxy laying this all around.
Okay. Any question on the information item?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have two two other discussions.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
The financial policies?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna, we're gonna wait on that. I'm gonna bring those back, Linda and I will bring those back at the August twelfth meeting, um and and just make that presentation under discussion item. I have I have a few and probably others do too, sort of questions or comments, and maybe we can either ha- have some phone calls or shoot some emails or do something to give you some feedback. Yeah, or schedule some time if you want to sit down and go over those. Well, I, I, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it Why don't we do that? Rather than not doing anything between now and the twelfth, maybe there's uh somehow we can. We've got a fifth week in there, so that that actually works out. So we, one of us could schedule some time, and if anybody else wants to sit down and go over them. Talk about, yeah. All right. And then the last item that we had was concerning tax relief, uh the letter.
Yeah, that, we we actually addressed it, I think a couple of years ago, Shannon brought it forward, um where there was an unmarried taxpayer uh who shared property with another person, you remember that? Well, of course, it's been brought to my attention once again, and um I just wanted to see if we had any interest in addressing it any differently than what we had. But you and I were here, I don't believe.
I won't, you know, I don't.
Neither are we.
Let me explain the issue of that and let the.
Well, the our current ordinance does make provision for two unmarried people that one of them could potentially have tax relief, that's actually in our ordinance. Where the breakdown is on this particular situation, if I remember correctly, and Donna talked to me a couple of times about it, it's been months ago, is there are still net worth and income limitations combined, you have to combine the income and the net worth of all of the owners, and my understanding is this property owner refused to provide that information.
Yeah, there was something, I don't remember what what it was.
Yeah, our our current ordinance actually has a, what the state law allows and somewhere along the line we adopted it, is if one owner, if they're not married and one's over sixty-five or disabled, they can get a prorated version of the the tax dis- discount because of the age. But our ordinance and state law allows it is based on means testing, so you have to combine the assets of all of the property owners and you have to combine the income of all the property owners to and my understanding is that information is not provided.
Okay.
I'm happy not knowing what you're talking about.
Okay.
For the moment, at least. So we're not going to.
Well, I I think what she's asking for exists, I think she just hasn't wanted to follow the rules.
Fulfill the criteria.
She hasn't wanted to fill the forms out correctly, which I think where the breakdown has been.
To be eligible.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see any need for any special consideration uh on our part, if the ordinance allows it and they meet the criteria of the ordinance, fine, if they don't or they won't provide the information, I don't see we should give many special.
I would ask the question, if the if the state code sets forth the eligibility requirements, the board doesn't have the authority to waive those.
Well, what the state code says, the state code, there's multiple provisions that apply. There's a state code provision that allows us to give some sort of tax relief to people over sixty-five. There's a separate state code provision that allows us to condition it upon the means test, we've done both. And then there's a third state code section allows you to do it for people that aren't married, and so we've adopted pieces of all three. And state code doesn't mandate how you do it, it gives you these tools that you can use, and we adopted a certain number of these tools together. And I think the breakdown with this particular situation has been the means testing, that they didn't want to comply.
They would rather not have the means testing condition. So the policy decision, the board is their problem then, the way they are. It sounds like our ordinances are in compliance and.
Our ordinance will, the only possible breakdown, and I think maybe this person has some confusion, there used to be a maximum that we could set as the means test, but that was that was struck struck in the twenty-ten general assembly session. So our means test figures are are perfectly legal today, they may not have been two years, I don't know where we were two years ago, but two years ago, the general assembly eliminated any restrictions on us setting the dollar figures on the means testing.
Status, the policy decision, the status quo is satisfactory.
Okay. That addresses that, that was.
Yes, sir.
The last item on that.
Now we gotta set a public hearing.
Yep, well.
Last discussion.
So information items, any question on the CSA report? Questions on the committee reports? Now we'll go to calendar.
So move to change to schedule public hearing to adopt an ordinance, removing the board of supervisors, the eight on position from the planning commission, setting it for August twenty-sixth at seven o'clock.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries four zero. Bringing that we have no further business to conduct.
I move adjourned.